Good morning, welcome Commissioners Court, June thirtieth. We have the full court on present, care you certified the meeting was properly posted.
Yes, sir.
You'll please rise to pray and pledge. James Drake.
Father, we humbly bow before you this morning. And we will take the time to invite you to this court session. Father, that you may guide the gentlemen in a direction that they need to go for the residence of Walker County. Father, we thank you that we're able to pray and talk with you and get your opinion on that. Father, may we be careful to heed their warnings. Lift it up and in your will. Father, we love you and we thank you in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I didn't receive any citizens input, anybody? We have ten items on consent agenda.
Move the approval second.
Moving second, it all in favor as you're right here. Number eleven jail, discuss and take action on approval of devolution's as the payment vendor for E-bonds. Barnes.
Barnes, sir.
We did the E-bonds. Seconds ago. When we did it, they had a pay processor. And had already changed it to give a belief. And that's all it is, we're just changing the pay processor.
We just need stamp of approval, no money.
No money.
I move to approve.
Moving second on favor, motion carries. Number twelve, discuss and take action on the purchase of Ford Latitude seventy-three fifty at the cost of nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars twenty cents from GTS Technology Solutions to be paid from CSCD supervision.
Good morning.
Program revenue. Good morning.
Judge, this is CSCD revenue that's just put in a separate account to not co-mingle with state funds unless there wasn't on the original budget for this fiscal year, so. Budget adjustment to approve that purchase.
Sounds good to me, like motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that. Moving second on favor as you're right here, motion carries. Number thirteen, discuss and take action on the purchase and payment of a nine foot four inch by thirty-eight point two foot UTCC covert for Roden Bridge Four in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred and seven dollars to be paid from budgeted funds.
I'll second that.
Moving second on favor as you're right here, motion carries. Fourteen, discuss and take action on award of solicitation C two three six zero dash twenty-five dash zero one eight eight. Walker County Jail water conditioning upgrade to timberline contract constructions in the amount not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars using Walker County Jail funding and project contingency funds. Michelle.
Florence, Michelle.
I have to ask, is GLS on the line, Ally?
Do you have a name? I don't see a specific GLS.
Eddie Morgan.
Yes.
I have GLS for any technical aspects. I inherited this project when I started two years ago. Trying to get a water softener for the jail. We went out for bid with GLS's guidance, they're our engineers. We have received the bid and as if you're looking at it, the one numbers that are circled are these options that we have elected to for our contractors to install and go with. I also had the jail here for them to have any questions.
Yeah, I've got a statement, nothing to do with you, but I mean, this might be kind of to my city manly here. Is this a result of all the chlorine that we had in the system from the city?
Remember when they first came for this, they had chlorine at like four milligrams per liter or right way up, way up top. And then we contacted them and talked to them about it. I know they made some adjustments, I don't know what the number is now, but I know that since we started that, I don't want to be behind any problems.
Yeah.
So, but.
So they've got the number fixed, basically?
I think they're down to where they're supposed to be. Valves around town and rerouted their water system and stuff like that, but I know a lot of stuff was compromised before and we haven't done anything with it since. So this is probably a fix it now and we'll probably be good.
Okay, so I guess the city gonna help us with this, right? Since you a ex-city employee.
Yeah, just go sit on the phone and text them. Their water was, their water was legal, it was just on the upper end of legal, you know?
So it wasn't over the legal point?
They can go, they can go, and actually even over four is not bad, you're allowed to have an average of four. But every now and then you go above four, it's not bad, but I think it's down, no doubt at my house it's less than.
I tried to find this last night, two years ago, and my memories tell me that we were around seventy thousand to fix all this.
No, it was more than that.
It was a metal engineer.
Lot more than that. What was the number originally, Josh?
I think it was five hundred.
Five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
We had put some money aside to get started.
Only like a hundred and twenty?
Yeah.
I just think it's one of the things, I think it's one of the things we just do, get them all fixed, got the conditioner in there, the city stuff is.
Well, they've changed the whole system with this new system, we're going to this charcoal system now.
It's a filter system and doing away with the salt additives.
So. I guess GLS has looked at this and wrote off on it as far as what y'all are, y'all are fit to do.
We're signing the money.
All right, Patricia, help us with money.
We have about six, seventy-six thousand, I think, left of the original money that we had budgeted. I think we have like a hundred and twenty-six paid for the engineering and all of the purchase services have seventy-six and a thousand or so, and then we have sixty-five hundred in another line item. So that difference would need to be funded from the project contingency.
And the money's there in that contingency.
I guess a question I have would be number twelve, the carbon prefiltration system. Did they, I think I'd like to know. Right, so usually happens on these is they say they're five thousand dollars a piece and you do them every eighteen months or whatever, and then we hook them up and they're twenty thousand dollars a piece and you do them every six months. It's just, do they have an idea of what the cost of these are each and a maintenance schedule for them going forward?
So I asked John that, I don't remember exactly what you told me.
Yes, sir, my understanding that. Is that at six months we're supposed to change them? And then after that, it was like every six to eight years changing? Is that right?
Yes, sir. Yes, and it just depends also on the amount of water going through the system. After the first year.
So what's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have to wait till the warranty clears through.
Okay, so the price to replace them at six months is what? And is that money in the budget for next year already?
Sense of any spare. I'm sorry, sir.
The price to replace them at six months will be what, and is that in your line item budget for next year?
No, sir, it's not.
Okay, we need to find that number and get it in your budget for next year, so we don't have to come back. Okay, that's my only comment is that, that, that's never what, it's never what they say it is. I mean, you like to think your best guess, but I've never seen one that's.
This is Eddie Morgan at GLS, I'd like to make a quick comment on that. We're getting four sets of filters as part of the project, so we're expected to be around three thousand dollars if you have the filters already each time you change it. If you, if you have to buy the filters and O-rings and gaskets and things that go with it, it's about seventy-three hundred dollars for a change out. And we've got some quotations on spare parts for that, now that's just material, you can actually use the jail labor to change it, it's just pulling filters out, putting filters back in. So that's kind of what we estimate.
How many filters are, so we got four, so how many, how many are in the system, is it four or two?
No, no, there's twelve in there, there's two sets of six, so you can run on one set if something goes wrong with one side of the filter set. So you have forty-eight and there's twelve in there, two casters with six each.
Okay, so we feel like we're good for the first year.
I feel like you're good for the first year myself, and again, we need to get spare O-rings and things, you know, to be ready in case you have to change something that we don't expect, but.
Okay.
That's about the cost we're looking at, it's way less than the salt.
So there's, there's twelve filters in there and they're three thousand dollars a piece?
No, there's twelve filters in there and they're, the total cost of them are forty-three hundred for the twelve, the set, and three thousand for other parts you have to tap to change it out. And there's a warranty period, we've got to be careful during the warranty period, we buy it from them, I think we can buy O-rings and things a lot cheaper once we go through the warranty period to be equal.
Okay, all right, I'll make the motion to approve agenda item fourteen, amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-four using jail funding and project contingency funds.
Second.
Moving second on favor as you're right here, motion carries. Fifteen, discuss and take action on partial award for solicitation C two three six zero dash two five dash zero two two geotechnical engineering services.
So we get the solicitation for geotechnical engineering services and the evaluation team being a professional service has ranked the vendors and I am here to request award for the top ranking vendor. And that would lead to Terricon.
How many did you have?
Ten.
This is the first one.
This is the first one.
I compared their pricing to similar bid out pricing for the city in New Waverly and I think everything's pretty much in line, nothing out there.
Of course, we have to award qualifications, the pricing is kind of little, there's not qualifications for that.
Sounds good.
And they have office and condo.
They do a lot of work, so. All right, I make the motion to approve agenda item fifteen, awarding Terricon consultants of the geotechnical engineering services.
Second.
Moving second on favor as you're right here. Sixteen, discuss and take action on the purchase of service and training from Pragmatics Works through S H I, go up to the contract and be paid from budget.
Yes, been working with purchasing on this, this is to sign agreement with S H I for services with Pragmatics. This is just adding another vendor that we can select from to work on some of our contracts.
Sounds good, Patricia. That's my motion, approve number sixteen.
Moving second on favor as you're right here, motion carries. Seventeen, discuss and take action on purchase, first thing it's container for precinct two.
Our little building that has some stores, all of our papers in, the roof is falling in, we've had to cut the electricity off because it's not safe anymore, right Larry? So, so we're looking at buying a container basically, and we looked at some over in Madisonville and the guy's gonna put a walk-through door in it. And we're gonna have to go with the twenty foot because that's, that's all that'll fit where we need to put it. And eventually we're gonna redo the roof on the back porch back there and cover it so it will be under the canopy in the back, back here, but. Price is around, I hate to put a total on it because it may be a little more than what he's got quoted, so. And the reason I got it on there, because I guess it's gonna be an asset.
Be an asset.
So, so anyway, let's go with the twenty foot and we'll say that it won't exceed five thousand.
Oh, you gotta add the thirteen fifty on the door.
No, that's in, that's in.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's my motion.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Eighteen, discuss and take action on interlocal agreement between Walker County Precinct Three and Walker County E S D One.
E S D has a piece of property on highway nineteen and they've asked if we can help them out with possibly some mowing, some drainage and ditch work. I don't know, kind of basically on call basis, so this is just an agreement for us to work with them, it's got a pricing schedule in it and stuff like that, so. This is separate from the project, the next agenda item, so I'm gonna make the motion to approve agenda eighteen as presented.
Second.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Nineteen, discuss and take action on interlocal agreement for work completed for Walker County E S D One by Walker County Precinct Three.
This is their first request for a project, we're mowing right now in the area, so they asked us if we could jump in and keep their, their track mowed down, so. This is for that, and then we have some grading work filtered in that we'll, we'll put in that, so my motion is approved agenda item number.
Question. Moving second on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty, discuss and take action, optimize county takes a sign for utility easement required for county property located at eight four two Old County Road, New Waverly, Texas.
Judge, put this on here, that's for the four H's building on the property this lease. Need to get power, water, different things, so it's kind of generic, but it's given, kind of just a right away it's out of the utilities, and that's gonna be my motion to approve.
Second.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on approval of survey, sub, sub consultants, Fulcrum Land.
I'm sorry, John.
Our judge, commissioners, so I just wanted to bring all of our sub consultants to y'all for the GLO projects. So starting off with our surveyor, Fulcrum Land Surveying, I've used them most of my projects in the last ten years, they do a great job. I have all of their qualifications memorized, but they, they are great, I enjoy working with them.
And we've taken all those steps to make sure that they're in line with the grant we.
Yeah, a lot of the grant requirements for consultants, I've been told by Grant Works don't apply to our sub consultants. They don't apply to our sub consultants as far as having to solicit. And all that.
Yeah, because we're, we're going through.
Okay, make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-one as presented.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-two, discuss and take action on approval of Geotech Sub, Sub Consultants, Terricon.
Same thing?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve, second it.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-three, discuss and take action on approval of Electrical Engineering Sub, Sub Consultants, Beard, Gilroy, and Dixon.
Move to approve.
Moving, moving second on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-four, discuss and take action on approval of Structural Engineering Sub Consultants, Dudley Engine.
Dudley, it was Dudley that came in.
No, I think so.
I can't think of the name, it wasn't him. Wasn't Dudley though?
Definitely if we use them, the only thing they'd be working on is the shelter storage.
Yeah.
That's definitely electrical, that's really the area.
Move for approval, second.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Thank you. Discuss and take action on funding agreement, Walker County Economic Development Corporation, this is a follow-up contract when they were here a couple of weeks ago. And I just put it until the end of this fiscal year, we have it on budget to talk about it for long range. That'll be my motion for the twenty-five thousand dollars to be paid from general fund.
Second.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-six, discuss and take action on twenty, twenty-six holiday schedule.
Make motion to approve.
I won't talk about for a minute.
That's cool.
So. My office gets hit up for that, it was Wednesdays on a Thursday, Friday that's off, or, so I want, this is a firm thing, so y'all take a look at, so I don't have to close the county down and get all these phone calls from people saying, well, we're leaving at noon, so.
Talking about Christmas, Wednesday.
Yeah, 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 so.
Twenty-third.
Yeah, I don't care what y'all do, if y'all want to do half-days on those, but I want them, put them on here, so it's not me making those decisions. So in, any holiday that's on a Friday, like Christmas, we give them that Thursday, Friday. Wednesday we come in, half the people are already gone, so they just close at noon. Okay, so.
Or Thanksgiving week.
Or Thanksgiving week, so do y'all want to do the noon or are we operating until five o'clock?
If you're gonna do the holiday, give them the whole day, or don't do it at all, that's kind of the way I look at it, but.
I, I don't know, it doesn't matter to me, I just don't want to be.
And I understand what you're saying, because a lot of people close their offices regardless of, you know, so.
Everybody's got their own thing, but they, the other ones call me, we, we, we do operate unelected officials offices.
Yeah.
And it ain't fair for them to have to work when the other elected officials leave.
No, yeah. So the elected officials that are closing their offices, they're making their people utilize their time correctly.
I don't have that, that's the only question.
Call it administrative league.
My guys, if we, we cut them loose like Fourth of July coming up, we're, we'll probably work through lunch till one or two, and then I, I tell them, hey, every one of them, they're not on administrative, they're, they're still on duty. They're on call on duty until four thirty in the afternoon, that's, that's what we'll do on the day before a long weekend. We don't start something new when we're gonna be off for three, four days, every time we wrap it up, we call it.
So we're specifically talking about December twenty.
Christmas, Thanksgiving, mostly, yeah.
Because it falls, it falls on a Friday this time.
But you have like the auditors, planning development, all those, like the fish.
Yeah, but still work.
Right, and they, they call my office, we closing or not, and those, some of them don't call, but.
Yeah.
They're just gonna work.
Is there anything else affected in there, judges, that one day?
Those are the two big ones.
You don't, it's too big when you're talking about Thanksgiving too. Thanksgiving's just Thursday and Friday, that's it.
But I usually give mine off that the Wednesday before at least half a day, because Thanksgiving's on Thursday, that way they can either travel or do whatever they need to do.
I think that would be elected officials' call, I can't go along with giving them the day before that, I mean, you, you get two days and that's, to me, that's it. That's where I stand on Thanksgiving, part of Christmas, you know, I mean, what's y'all's thoughts, I mean?
Are you in agreement with the schedule, with what you're playing?
I could go away with Wednesday, I ain't got a problem doing away with it.
You gonna boot me there.
I figured there would.
I'm fine with it luggage.
All right, vote on it, yeah. Before you, before I change my mind.
I'm gonna hold that firm when it comes up, so, I got a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand.
Like true you got it.
Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on tax property insurance renewal. Everybody get their questions answered? We didn't get many in.
And Lisa is on.
And Lisa's online.
We were, I didn't get any, I don't remember getting anything answered, I was, I was one, she's online, I was one asking the questions about some of the stuff. Got a ten thousand dollar deductible, they've got a lot of stuff on here, I've just eleven hundred dollars, two thousand dollars, ninety-eight hundred dollars paying for that if I'm deducted with ten grand. I don't know what these side improvements are, some of these ones are like courthouse annex side improvements, I mean. I'd like to know what they are before I approve it, because I mean, we're talking about putting a, a roof on something, the sidewalk out, out here, I mean, there's, that should be covered under the main policy, I don't.
Are you on Lisa?
Good morning, I am on. Good morning, Judge Christian and Commissioners, I do have the additional information for you on your questions. Side improvements typically include, that could be fencing around the building, it could be chain link fence, flag poles, signs, typically things like that is what falls under that. And I can send y'all a very detailed list of what all that your side improvements include for those locations, it could also be a sign. You know, some type of sign memorial, maybe something that you have outside a building, but I can send you that detailed list, what our appraisers pick up on that. And that, that'll help answer all of your questions on those. Also, your question about the deductible, you were asking about dropping property that's under the ten thousand. My recommendation on that would be to probably, I've gone back through your schedule and looked at it, I would probably leave those buildings on there because what will happen in the event, say that there's a tornado at a location and you have damage to multiple properties per that occurrence, per that tornado is considered one event, everything falls under the ten thousand dollar deductible that's damaged. So you wouldn't have multiple ten thousand dollar deductibles per location or per building that was damaged. And it looks like a lot of your buildings that are under that may be in the same areas whenever I'm looking at your schedule.
Do you have a way to, to all these side improvements to tell me exactly what the side improvements are?
Oh, yes, yeah, I, I will send you that report and it, it will break them out, there's quite a few of them as you can tell on there, but I've got an Excel spreadsheet I can send the court. And anytime that y'all want to look at this, I would, I would suggest at renewal when we send this out and Ally gets that, we could always set up a workshop and go through that with underwriting and give you the specifics on that. We usually, we usually start working on our renewals a hundred and twenty days out, and we can set up a meeting and, and go through these with you and answer any detailed questions that you have.
Well, I'd like to that, and like the Veterans Center out there, we, we own the building, we do not own the contents. We've got a million dollars in contents on here, that, I mean, it's kind of like renters insurance, even though they don't pay rent. I don't, I don't insure my renters' contents, I insure my house that I let my renters live in, right?
Yes, sir, and you said that's the veterans?
Veterans Center.
Okay, I will circle back with Ally on that.
Yeah, I think that we, to get this behind us, I think we approve the renewal and get it in place, and then if a commissioner or somebody wants to visit with her and find something, we just come back and drop it. But I think, I, but I think we need to get it on the books.
Didn't we already approve it to pay it last week?
Well, did we?
We already, we already.
Oh, yeah, so we did that.
Yeah.
That's been two whole weeks ago, sorry, bud.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
Right, and, but I, I just, there's some things on there, like the wake station stuff down there, the building that we had on there. I mean, we, we don't, we don't own the land, I, I get we built the building, I, I'd like some more clarification on that. Just where I'm at on it.
Okay, um, Commissioner, would you be available this afternoon for me to give you a call and talk about these specifics so we can look into those?
Absolutely, get with Ally and get my cell phone number.
Yes, I will do that, thank you for having me this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you more.
We just need to pass on point seven then?
Yes.
That's twenty seven, twenty eight, discuss, take action on changes to the procedure for submission of items and backup materials for inclusion on Commissioners Court Agenda. Quentin.
Bring Ally up here. I just wanted to pass a bill Governor signed in it's how filled in twenty two for who knows how long. The rule for posting a public meeting was seventy two hours. Beginning on September first, it's the business days, holidays, weekends don't count, so. We need to change the time for division of the agenda items and backup, and we need to change the time for posting. Let's take today as an example, if, if I'm on a Monday Commissioners Court. Three business days would have been last week's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. No holidays at that time, can't count Saturday or Sunday. Now, my boss and I being attorneys, we believe that four fifty nine on Wednesday counts as business day. But we think, because that is the law, and that's the way it is every other place, the blessed nature wasn't clear.
Right, just.
Considering their intent was, we think that a better objective would be for Ally to be able to post the agenda by Tuesday afternoon. Sometime before she leaves off at five o'clock, just because we don't want to work in after hours to post an agenda. So if she's gonna post it by Tuesday afternoon. My initial recommendation to you is that all agenda items and backup be in her office by five o'clock by. For the last business day of the week people. That's, that's a long ways out from where Commissioners Court is, and I, having been doing this with her and her predecessor for many years. I'm aware of who our problem children are, and they're gonna really struggle with it, but we have to post it. Three full business days, and if there's a holiday in there and we have a whole point, for instance, we have July fourth this year, it doesn't apply, it starts till September. But we have July fourth in there, that's an extra day, and that, we push it back even a day for that, so what we're. Wanting to do is have, you, you guys have it in your policy or in your equipment procedures or someplace like that, but. And what we would need is an official notification sent out to all the elected officials, it's good we're talking about this today, because a whole lot of them are here. And they might hear in my voice the frustration. I have an ally, when items are turned in really, really late, and then we're scrambling. Because we're not, literally Ally and I are not just sitting there waiting for them to turn stuff in so we can review it. And I reviewed this, and I reviewed this like Thursday, I ate about eight o'clock when I reviewed this again. So it's just kind of one of those things that is gonna have to move back, and that's just, that's just gonna be the law.
One thing for clarity, does that still allow the additional claims to be submitted on the Monday of the meeting since it's already posted?
Yeah, so.
On the agenda.
So that's the thing, this is, this is really the agenda, okay, the backup material that we've been, we regularly get that late, that's, that misses the deadline. And I understand financials, they're, I almost never see financials when I'm reviewing the agenda, but I don't have to. That's not the requirement, it's the agenda has to be posted every business days, so. Goal here would be, uh, a Tuesday, so I'm the desk to Ally, that she does take a look at the calendar, what the holidays are, when we meet on a Tuesday. Which is still gonna have to be the previous Tuesday, because that, that means there's a Monday holiday in there, and she probably, probably have to send out regular emails saying backups due by, on this day. So what we're thinking is, and that's a lot of days, that's two weekends, that's, that's a lot of time between, but I don't know another way around, right?
So it, hypothetically, if we know we've got something coming, we want the backup, as long as we get it on the agenda, do we need to make a deadline for the backup as well?
Well, so for the law, we have to do the agenda, that's all the law is addressing, the backup materials. In order to follow our customer and practice of, of getting it reviewed ahead of time and all of that, it needs a back, it needs a time. It could be later, that's, 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 it's true, it could be later, um. Kind of depends on if y'all want to go that direction or not, it may be necessary sometimes to do that, but the agenda itself with the items that, you know, the specific request, it's got to be done. With that seventy, with that three day business, so it's, that's, that's where y'all get, that's part of why we're doing this as an agenda item. Y'all get to decide what you want, because you, you control the backup, like theoretically, you don't have to publish any backup, you could wait and do that after court if you wanted. But as a public service and as a, as a benefit to you and your, your preparation and all of that, because. We send it out to the public, we don't have to do that until after court, but you want to review it, so if you have it by. You've got to decide what time, you're supposed to be getting it by Thursday, but you don't usually get it by, or it's later on Thursday, so.
It just is what it is, gotta do it, so we establish, we want to establish a budget day, what day do you want the agendas, not budget day, agenda day, what day do you want?
Thursday or Friday, Ally?
For what?
That Friday per agenda items, and you have it done on Monday and reviewed?
Okay, Friday by five, Friday by four.
Friday by, Friday by five is fine.
Friday by five.
All right, what about the backup?
In theory.
We've been real firm on the backup for when you turn it in on the agenda, and a lot of times that doesn't happen either way, and we still don't have it by court, but it makes it nice that we have the backup.
Oh, yeah, you would have voted on it, dude.
Yeah, so, uh, it would be ideal if we would set the backup due by five o'clock on Friday as well. And obviously, there are going to be times where backup is going to come in later, if, that's not violating the law for that to come in. So we would strongly encourage and prefer, if we have someone who's regularly missing, we know, I mean, I know, I get, we, we see the notices from the auditor's office and. There's a reason for that, and this, this is gonna impact them on getting those financials, I mean, there's, I don't know how they're gonna have it by the Friday.
Yeah, financials aren't really a problem, it's the vendor payments, as long as, uh, we can add the Monday payments, we can move whatever deadline you want to.
And that's the thing, so if there's special cases or a, an unusual circumstance where the backup comes in sometime after. You know, after the Friday at five o'clock, Ally will put together what she's got, what I usually get from her is the agenda with all the backups she has. And then comments on which ones are missing, and then those things come in later, that they contribute in through the week, I'm not encouraging it, in fact, that.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, you know, obviously, that's been the problem in the past, is you know, people don't think that you have to review everything before we even look at it. So, I, I mean, yeah, I would definitely encourage at that time of the agenda being filed, and. Yeah, you, so you're on Friday? Yeah, I'm good with Friday.
I have a question about this, we're talking about our normal. How does this play into either a special meeting and or an emergency meeting?
Okay, uh, special is gonna follow the exact same rule, three business days, so when, when you guys, like, I know you're going into budget here pretty, all summer long, having a session, you schedule a little special. Of course, it won't affect us this year until September, but once that happens, we'll just have to count back and do the same thing, there, it'd probably be the Friday preceding the, the Friday before the meeting, that same kind of thing. An emergency doesn't fit, um, so emergency has a different ti- has an hour timeframe, and of course, they're very limited in what you can do in an emergency anyway.
Sure.
But that's not, that's not impacted by this, Ally.
But the special isn't that bad, because you don't have all that backup you're getting together, it's usually one or two items on it. So you don't have that long to review, and we're, we're gonna be calling Quentin, Quentin, we need a special question, here's the item, and he's like, yep, go ahead.
And if y'all decide to do, for instance, a special session next Monday, and this was in place, then we would have already, that, that's one of our problems there, is that. Say, okay, let's say today, y'all decide that you're gonna have a special session next Monday on July, what is that, the, uh, seventh? You're gonna have one on July seventh, well, obviously, backup couldn't have been turned in on Friday past, because you didn't even know you were gonna have it. What you'd have to do there is Ally would have to, so y'all decide to do that, would have to send an email there, but I tell everybody, your backup and agenda items are due today at five o'clock. So that she could put it together, I could review it, and we could post it by tomorrow at four fifty nine.
And the, and the, and going off memory here, but special meetings can be called for.
Anything.
Pretty much anything that we normally do, right?
Yes, that special, special sessions or can be called for any, there are some limited things, there are certain budget things you can't do, certain things you can't do except in a regularly scheduled meeting.
But if we needed to pay a bill or something come in that was hot, that we need to get taken care of, we could call it, yes.
Especially if the special session is held on the same day of the week that a regular session is held, pretty much, almost everything can be done.
Okay.
Yeah, and in that case, we would have to have a kind of a crunch or convinced time period to get agenda items and backup material.
I'm not pushing the one, but I think Andy had a question. I just want to make sure, so if we have court today, Monday, uh, the back, the agenda for next court would be due this Friday.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's what, that, that's what this, that's what this amounts to.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So like our, our next Commissioners, a regular session is on the fourteenth, if we're under this rule. Then this coming Friday, which July fourth holiday, whatever, it would be, that's when the agenda items would have to be turned in, now, backup can, we want it that day. Obviously, it may not make, but, but the agenda items have to be in, in order.
Wonder why I'm so slow. I wonder why we're all so slow.
Well, we gotta be sure of that.
The state knows what we're doing.
Yeah, 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 well, you, you, you know, I'm gonna keep my.
Did our boss vote for this?
So I get.
You know, when you look on their website, you try to find their information.
The motivation for the state of the legislature here had primarily, and there's some other things in this bill, and I've already shared them with, with Patricia's office, because they're gonna impact her. Part, part, this is motivated by counties would, like we did, we would post our agenda on Friday morning at nine o'clock. And then make a major vote on a budget on Monday morning at nine o'clock. And certain legislators believe that, well, people can't be bothered to review that on Saturdays and Sundays, and so.
Better don't bother us.
I guess I quit on Sunday.
Yeah, yeah, we just quit doing it on Sunday, so.
For decades, people have done, but that, I, I watched that hearing, and that's what the, the sponsor of this bill, that's, that was her position. That's not fair, they need three business days to review this.
Typical government.
So that's where that came from, and I also wanted to say that I, I've been reviewing your agenda items and, and backup for a long time now. And in the old days, almost every.
Now you're talking about me, Quinn.
Those days, it, it was not, more times than not, I was finding two, three, four, five things that needed to be redacted, or needed to be changed, or needed to be clarified. Ally can tell you, I hardly ever say anything anymore, it, people are doing a good job, like they're turning their materials in with the proper things pulled out. Uh, the right things are in there, I, we don't, we have to tweak it every now and then, it doesn't take me nearly as long to review it, use it, so I gotta find the time. And, you know, I may be in court or I may be someplace else, so I gotta find the time, and I only gotta get it back to her, so she has time to put it together, so, because it does, it takes quite a bit of time.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we know, I mean, you know, that's what I'm saying, you go through it before we do it, sometimes it takes four, five hours for this stuff. He's saying the younger courts better than what he's saying.
I know.
Man, you're talking about this not up.
An effective date, obviously, you want to start it a little bit in advance, so we, we make this effective now, immediately, I mean, you know, that's only. It's only four meetings or three meetings between now and then for people to get it.
Try it this time, and then you get another one to figure it out.
That's what I'm saying, I think you do it immediately. You, you could. And if, and if it lags a little bit, we're still legal until September, we can, we can, people can get used to it, so, um, if that's your motion.
Andy, you got something?
One last thing, because my people that I deal with are on the opposite end of the want and desire section. They probably not even pleased with legislation, most of it, they're pushing for stuff to get in at the last minute possible. So courts, okay with me reflecting the fact that this change was made because of a change in the legislature.
From the House, House Bill fifteen twenty two, we can give them Trey's number.
You want it here? I got it right here.
Andy, they don't have a problem going to our state, complaining about us.
Yeah. Fifteen twenty two, that's the number.
Their last minute has moved way far as a, so, I mean, it's, in terms of days, it's, it's really about a three day change, but. It, it, um, it matters because it's three days plus a weekend, so it really stretches it out. But yeah, that's the, that's the, that's what we got, there's some other stuff in there, but that's a particular problem, and so.
Hey, look on the bright side, we'll get to review this during three business days instead of over the weekend, so Commissioners are gonna have all weekend.
I'm sure there'll still be some here next.
Planning about, can we move court to, to, to Tuesday or?
Who complained about that? It wasn't lit.
You're spending your weekends, well, your weekends are, you're gonna free up, you know.
That's it.
So.
Court on Tuesday, we still enough screw up a week. Ooh, you know, it's on Tuesday.
So we'll start.
Next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting. Now, back to the day.
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, thanks for today. Yep.
Yeah, that, that, this, that's a challenge from Friday.
We're gonna, we're trying it, Andy.
This is trial run.
We got two to get it right.
Somehow I feel like Quentin was talking about you earlier.
He's not the only one.
I'm gonna comment.
I've been pretty good. Judge, make the motion however you want it to read.
Uh, I'm gonna start effective today, we'll move. The agendas due the week before.
Friday.
Friday.
Friday at five P M.
Eight days prior.
Friday at five P M.
So it's basically due this week.
Yeah.
What we're saying. Friday's the holiday.
Along with backup. Agenda item and backup, okay, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Moving second on favor raise your hand.
Reluctant.
Motion carries.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Hey, planning and development, nobody's left yet except for Larry.
Hi Larry.
See you Larry. Discuss and take action on new Waverly Development LLC revised request for contingent approval for. Development permit on Waverly pays, place second, section three for initial. Section of Roebuck Lane and portions of Elizabeth Lane prior to final approval of plat plans for plat number twenty twenty dash zero three eight.
This is exactly what we did last court, it's gonna have all the same stipulations, Andy, rest of the stipulations, there was a letter dated, the reliability goes back to the developer. At risk and the layer certified one of the grainage, they're just changing the area that they're. Now, they're not changing the conditions, in other words, they're paying, they want to, if you look at the little map, they want to turn a little bit down, Commissioners want an inspection, they, they're more familiar, they've seen it, they basically just want to. It's like a different area that they don't.
Yeah, and I, I don't have, I was out there with Mr. Declan, I don't have issues with what you're asking to do.
My motion is gonna be to approve a contingent on all the same contingencies we had last time, I'd have to go back to the minutes to rewrite. They were reflective of the same original variant. Reflective of the same contingency. Reflective upon the same contingencies to the original variants.
I'll second that, since that was what.
Moved and seconded on favor, raise your hand, motion carries.
Right.
Budget time.
Been waiting on this. All year.
First up, Miss Congress.
First on the list.
A little more information.
A little more information about. Maybe I haven't been out there, I haven't been out there in a while. Um, and it's about an eleven thousand nine hundred foot building long. We currently.
Thank you.
Only have one panic button that is in the jury's front hall. Customers come in from the front. So if something's going on in the back of the building. Panic button is how we did. They, they. Um. The request is for. Panic buttons to be installed in all the halls. Um, but it's the panic button system that the county is currently using. What I have is through uh, resources security, it's a policy that. I pay, I have my budget. But it doesn't go directly to law enforcement as the county system does. It's going to a call center, the call center is gonna start with number one and number two employee and then. They will contact dispatch, it's a very long delay process.
Right.
So, um, that was my first request. The second would be to make the panic button system more, I don't know, more feasible, more productive, more. Um, more better would be to give us um, faster access like the county buildings have. Because it, a- as it's presently set up, the only way you can get into the building is with a code. In the back door, it's a magnetized door and I enter and delete codes as necessary. So if law enforcement is coming to serve a warrant. Um, one of us has to be at the back door and wait for them to knock so that we can let them in. Versus if they had to keep our system, they could enter our building. We just recently gave Larry code because Larry can't get into our building either. So there's some problems with the way the building is set up. Um, in the front, that door is also magnetized. We keep it locked except during. Um, eight to five business hours and then we have an interior. Door that is also magnetized that the front staff can let you in. So you really can't get in the building unless you have a code.
So I'm assuming this is a magnet we got in our, our little. Do dad, we got in our IDs, right?
Oh, to, to get into the doors, yes. Um, my staff, some of us have that so we can get into um, the first floor of the courthouse. Um.
So if you hit a panic button, how are we, how's it gonna work? Are we gonna? Will Hospital PD's.
It's, it's the S, yes, it's actually the SO. I don't know about the PD. Um, because they don't have the same system, but um, you know, when Stokes comes to serve warrants. We've actually given him a code so he can come on in, but that's problematic as.
So it's a code, you don't get in by the key card right now. That's what I'm reading in here.
The only reason I have this is because every county has that one. It doesn't work at all at my building, so there's no purpose. Um, and I can come in and bypass security.
But my point, my, my, my question is, is the. Will it be compatible with also just the sheriff's department, but with also short title with the HPD, Hospital Police Department? In case of an emergency.
Not to my knowledge.
But you're gonna go to our, this little thing. On our system, our system goes through dispatch and it alerts every officer.
Right, that's two different things. That's, that's, so that goes to every officer, but still, how are they gonna get into the building?
But our, our, ours are the same thing. Those officers can key into our system.
Oh, I didn't know that. So their card access is.
That's the point I'm making.
Know that.
Yeah, yeah. So when we hit that button, any officer can come in any door they want to.
Okay.
It's the same with the school district, we have the same agreement with H I S D. Any sheriff's department, Nashville PD can tag into the school districts.
That's what.
They can do the same thing in our buildings. We're all on the same chip.
We're not, we're not gonna limit that, that they can't, right?
Oh, absolutely not. I mean, as, as HPD staff comes and goes, who monitors that as far as?
Our stuff Dan does.
Okay.
So you can send Dan a message and say, I want Larry's key card to work at my door and he puts that code on Larry's card. And when you say, Dan, I don't want Larry anymore, he takes that off.
Who manages the police departments, do you know?
They're all, uh, so each department, so I'm sure Tim does the sheriff's department and either Barnes or somebody's gonna do the PD.
I didn't know that it was personal, it's even better.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to explain that the limited experience you do have. Um, so you have to consider that for us.
Yep.
All right.
Any other questions?
Not at this time. We'll call you for now.
Yeah, Bob?
Hold on, Bob. Know our population will flow in the town. Our veteran populate.
Bob, where are you? I'm not doing a real, where are you headed in here? What number? Oh, there you are. That way I ain't gotta sit here for ten minutes.
Eighteen to twenty six. Three six, three six.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Be the only veteran service officer for county, huh? Two weeks, not only interviewing the veterans or surviving spouses for their benefits. In processing their claim forms and all that, but I'm also answering all the phone calls and all the walk-ins that come in my office. Uh, walk-ins have gone down since I've gone to appointment only. Uh, process, but I still get, I still get a few throughout the month. Uh, as you can see, my uh, productivity has actually increased. I'm actually looking at by the end of this fiscal year, it's very, very close to eight hundred. More than my predecessor has ever seen in his, in his entire time in the office. Okay. Um, I said during the interview process, I get interrupted phone calls, so the majority of them being spam. But there are some, there are times where I get veterans actually needing appointments, so I had to interrupt the interview I'm working on to get that veteran scheduled. Uh, with the assistance of another person in the office to handle those phone calls and the walk-ins. I can actually get more veterans appointed throughout the day instead of just seeing four to five that I'm normally seeing right now. And the question that came up last year was if I was willing to work full time. Yes, I am willing to work full time. And if needed, as I said before. But also the good thing about that is county would not have to pay for health insurance on me, so I'm already covered by three other insurance programs. Okay, so that's one thing that, that's a plus there. The other thing I'm looking at is we just got awarded with uh, veteran services, we got awarded two grants. Texas Veterans Commission. Want to uh, provide financial aid to veterans in the county. Fifty, fifty two grants, that's the thing. The other one was a seventy thousand dollar grant for. Uh, home improvements or due to uh, major uh, actual disasters. Uh, safety reasons, a lot of older veterans that are in need of grant modifications to their houses. That's for that seventy thousand dollars to help out. I'll, I will have to go and actually see the house. Find out what the, what these things are, what needs are, work with contractors, the whole nine yards. It being laid on me as the uh, rec contact project manager for this grant. I'll be sending judge the notice of brief uh, grant agreement uh, set uh, later on this morning. Which I just received today.
Appreciate what you're doing now.
Yeah.
Does it also, an additional person, that's where I can turn around and hopefully frame my product. When I decide to retire down the road.
Yeah, we appreciate what you're doing. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Steve's in court, he's gonna come down when, when he can. Larry? Page one fifty-six?
I've texted to say you should be coming down.
When he comes down, we're gonna fit somebody out and put him in.
Morning. Uh, my first uh, request was for uh. And for other senior senator alone, more than moderating, actually the center has agreed to take care of that cost on their own.
Which one was that?
The senior center alone. Uh, increase in trade. A little bit of extra money, so I can send some people to use the classes. Placement at the veteran service office. Flooring in there's. Probably thirty years old. That's pretty nasty looking. Um, we try to keep it clean, but it is frayed and seems to be coming apart uh, in several different places in there. It'd be a really good thing to uh. Above the appearance.
Number one. One fifty-six.
One six. We'll stop you, we'll stop you.
I just look here.
See what his little narrative.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. All right, uh, next one is reserve forty thousand for HVAC replacement at the annex. All of those units are the same age on the roof up there, they're all package units. Um. Yeah, range in size from five tons to uh, we have two, ten tons up there. Um. We can keep them running, they're not running efficiently right now, but we can keep them running for another couple of years. But. They've been there since uh, twenty twelve, I believe. And they're about to get worn out, we're gonna need to be replacing that storm actin' for a little bit of fun set aside. So that we can look at a full replacement project in three fiscal years. It's gonna require a crane, um, and uh, it's gonna be a multi-day event, so it's gonna be. Next year I'll ask for more. Following your reminder. Need to trigger on the project.
So you're just starting to build the funding for it, right?
How many is up there, Larry?
There are eight package units up there.
We didn't do some of those units.
Sir.
We, we didn't do some of those units recently, or I'm thinking back twenty twelve, probably.
Uh, no, in seventeen, we uh, we did a conversion on the first one. Where we did away with a, with a hot water coil and we had a heat pump system added in down there, but that was in twenty seventeen, that served the second, the first floor. Hold on. Um, the rest of the units will serve the rest of the building.
Okay.
The heat pump unit only serves the center of the building, basically where uh. Vehicle and voter registration in the main public hallway. Everything else is served by separate package units.
That's probably what I'm thinking about. I remember doing something.
That was a really, a fairly big project, we did away with the uh, a gas boiler up there.
Yeah.
That all of them.
You got a recoat roof, said?
Recoat roofs, yes sir. Uh, in twenty eighteen, JP three and four had a. Silicon coatings put placed on the metal roofs. That uh, that project carried a four-year warranty, it was a very low-cost project. Um. The uh, I'm sorry, that was the Tam Road, the JP two and JP three, and JP four. I in-house did uh, similar coating on the JP four building that was in-house, so those were all basically the same age. They're beyond warranty and we have had to do stone minor repairs here and there when we get storms in there. Um, so I'm looking for a package on that to have those uh, silicone roofs re-rolled up there. The price point that we're looking at here is a basic market value and that's based on a seven to ten warranty. If we go with uh, a double code, dou- double or triple code, of course, the project costs could get higher. But then we wind up with a twenty-year warranty on them.
So normally ten, uh, the auto panel that's up there lasts twenty, thirty years, why we got? Like JP four, you've done it, now you're gonna do it again. Same like me, the timeframe would be cheaper just to re-roof it.
It actually costs less to do it this way. And then um, and then there's the fact that uh, this doesn't add any weight up there, so it actually costs less to do this. And you get a longer, longer period out of it. Cause, because what happens on this type of project is uh, the company will go in and re- remove and replace all the fasciners that are up there. Uh, leaving the metal in place and then they uh, they update any of the flashing that needs to be done. They roll, rotate over all seams and then they roll the, roll the new material over the top of that. So it uh, uh, we've had a real good look with this, with this type of system.
And the other thing you got is operating increase on generators, is that just because we're getting the new ones?
Well, that's because of the two that we have in place.
Correct.
That's the cost for the two added to the project, uh, added to the, to the contract price. And that's just for the prevent magnets, the three-quarter inch, and one annual check on them. As we get those others installed. And we'll uh, I guess we'll have to do budget adjustments.
For this year.
Not for this year, for next year.
We, we got that, we, we got, we got the grant, we got the grant for the other generators.
Yes.
Oh, well then, that probably needs to be put in the request, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll, I'll, I'll remember that.
Okay.
I'm, so, I'm, go ahead, get you next. I, I wouldn't follow the math, so you're, it's three quarters, well, three quarters done. I'll follow three quarters there, but are, are you adding the, is the one annual part of the, is that the other quarter that we're missing?
That's the other quarterly, but it's a more in-depth inspection. It's an oil change, it's a, it's a full, full engine diagnosis. And then uh, they do uh. Let me check how much juice is actually putting out, they do that on.
Test runs are low. Breaker, make sure it charges your building for like a change. Oh, on the thirty-nine eighty-eight flooring at the veteran center. Um, I just need to go and put that in the. Agenda for the next meeting and bring, let's just get you the money to do that. I don't have a reason to wait six, eight months for that, so that would be, yeah, yeah.
I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, just bring that back, next meeting.
Anything else?
That's it, now, eh?
Thank you, Bill.
Amy? One sixty.
Morning.
Say, who of us, Miss Allen, Commissioner Kirkendall, um, myself and. Um, Steve Whitebun. Um, and, and Bill, send it one of our meetings. Um, we're having um. On our, we're, we're taking our employees, um, our six to eight-year employees are starting to look other places. So we wanted to present bringing back the insurance at retirement. Back in two thousand thirteen, we stopped that for our employees. Um, so we are asking for a hundred thousand dollars to start funding. Bringing that back for all of our employees. Um, so anybody hired after ten, one or thirteen, they need to earn twenty-five years instead of the twenty. And if you go to work somewhere else where you get insurance, we would pause your insurance now and whenever you retired again, we would pick that back up.
Okay. I was, I was, that was my question that I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, a lot of them are dropping. And, and uh.
Yeah, uh, Germer County drops.
Yeah, and we don't want to, uh, if, if we can manage it, you know, we wanna be able to, it goes dormant until they need it again.
Would it go dormant? I, I've got a couple of retired TDC people. Would it go dormant or would it go as a secondary?
It would be up to y'all. We were gonna present it going um, dormant because they have the other that could pick up as being primary. And we don't pay that at all until they need it whenever they leave again.
I'd say let it go dormant, that's.
That's what kills us on the plan we have now is. We carry the insurance regardless of where you go, if you have other insurance. You know, where this one, we're gonna have to make some adjustments. We talked about the, the twenty-five, you know, that's up to us if. If it plays out, you may wanna drop back to twenty, you know, or, or may wanna go longer, I don't know, but this is kinda what we've come up with and, and uh.
The general cost difference on a twenty-five and a twenty?
We did not, no.
And I want, I would like to know the. Cost difference of dormancy versus a secondary, I mean, is.
Well, it would be the same price.
Secondary is the same price? Really? That's, I, I believe you, but that's.
Because tax gonna charge us the same price, they're on our insurance, whether they're either on it or not on it.
So that's, that's not an option.
When you go to, when you go to Medicare, then you go as a supplement, that's a draw.
Right, correct.
Yeah. The coach has done here and I have.
So it. I, I run into this with a employee that I hired part-time out of Montgomery County. Um, he couldn't go full-time because he would lose it completely, which is what we're addressing here. Is there any employees that, that have insurance that come to the county that were full-time employees, is there a way that we can have a full-time employee? That did not participate in our, in our insurance?
So the way our agreement is written right now with TAC is it's in a hundred percent employee participation.
Hundred percent.
But I guess we could always get with them and see if there's. You know, a number, is it five percent, we can have five percent of our employees not on it, if we reach the five percent, then. The next person has to wait, um, that's an option we can look at, but right now it is a hundred percent.
I mean, today, just now today, we had a, a, one, uh, Bob was saying that he didn't want our insurance.
Right now, if he went full-time, he would have to take it.
Have to take it, right? Yeah.
So this, what, our goal was to try to keep our. Six to eight-year employees that. Because we can't give them anything more than market, um, so. We have them trained and at that point. They're, they're very valuable to us, even with twenty or eight years, but they're starting to look other options for more money. But bringing this back, we're hoping to possibly be able to keep them.
And we're pretty confident the hundred thousand would be sufficient, we're gonna have a fund with.
Over total separate bill.
This hundred thousand, the plan would be to add that to that special fund. Uh, of course, that would build that fund up in these early years. And then uh, one of the things the court may wish to discuss is whether or not they want to put that money into a trust. Or if they want to maintain it as just a special fund in the county that, of course, could be. Touched by the commissioners' court or.
Yeah, that, that's probably coming out a later day, if, depending on after budget, if this does go through. Then we'll bring them back as, as a pair. And, and see how the court wants to. Uh, address, put them into a trust, but both of them being separate, because they're two separate plans, but.
I'm assuming that. Not fault on the two separate plans, I'm assuming the trust just to limit its ability for homeowners up here to touch it, right?
It could only be used for insurance purposes.
But it would still go into our investment. Uh, mechanisms like, uh, I can't think of the name over right now. Uh, tax pool or something like that.
Well, there, it, I honestly can't answer that question, I think we want someone to look at that. Uh, it would be a trust, and typically that trust would not. Flow through our regular tax pool, MBIA and whatever, if you would be with some. Company, maybe a bank or something, and they would do the investments on the behalf. It's the way I understand it, that we would definitely need uh, some legal assistance with that.
Now, you're saying there's two different things, what, what?
Well, you, you, you're talking about two different plans, you're talking about the plan that we're on. And then the plan that everybody folks thirteen is on.
Yeah, it's, it's a different, totally different.
So you wanna keep them separate because the.
The plans, yes, but the fund that funds all of it, is that?
Still needs to be separate, i- in my opinion it does. You know, now, that may not be Patricia's opinion, but I would think it needs to be kept separate. You know, for funding sources. But.
Yeah, and, and I don't know, like I said, that might be something I look at for sure, because in reality, the money's gotta come from somewhere.
Yeah, um, I would, it's actually a court decision, not, not a Patricia's.
I still be looking. It's not gonna change my thoughts.
Get Quentin involved in the discussion as to the different options, and then court ultimately would like to test.
Well, and I'm not against it, I'm just saying, you know, to me, it would seem like. Funding for each one of them separately, but maybe not.
So that was because we're gonna have, I added, in the policy, I added the red part, so basically we have the. Employees that would be grandfathered in at the twenty years prior to two thousand thirteen, then we have the ones after ten, one of thirteen, if you decide it. Twenty-five years, which that's just what we presented, so then you kinda have a different funding source to go along with that group.
And, and all this comes back into, you know, we've got people that've been here thirteen years. That, you know, they have good benefits while they're here, but that, there's nothing, you know, once they decide to leave to, to. Keep them staying here, and so hopefully, you know, this is a small step that'll. Keep them in place for a while till we can do a little better down the road, maybe.
And, and I'm not against it at all, I, I'm actually gonna root for this, but uh. Just wanna understand it.
Yeah, no, I.
How many people from after thirteen were hired until now is this gonna affect? I mean, all of them, obviously.
We have, we have five employees that are grandfathered in prior to thirteen, we have two hundred and thirty-six that were hired after ten, one or thirteen. But that number changes every day.
Sure.
Does that exclude me?
You're actually an eighty-five number, but, yeah, so I mean, I do have people in the eighty-five.
You should take, you make it eighty-four.
That aren't eight, that, and same thing, there's employees that are hired today that aren't gonna be here two years. Um.
So it's a float, it's a floating number, but.
So we took a dive and, I'm just asking, have we took a dive into the eighty-five to say like, I, I'm just gonna pick on Ronnie? Uh. He's not, he's, he's included and we budgeted for him, but he's not, you haven't been here twenty years? I, I thought you were, uh, this is your fifth term.
No, I, at the end of this, it'll be sixteen.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not gonna make twenty.
Kind of have, I've kinda went through and looked.
So I'm saving you money, Brandon, I'm trying to help you.
And then how long they've been here, so there, there are some of these, they, probably ten of them, my best guess, that won't.
It'll shrink off.
Right.
Yeah. And that's why when you, when you first done these original numbers, it scared the heck out of. Because you're, you're budgeting for two hundred and how many, sixty-something people, and, but all of them people ain't staying. And so when we. And refresh my memory, Patricia, when our plan that we're on, it was never budgeted until.
When we stopped it, the budget started.
And so in thirteen is when it started, and, and so it took five or six years of work of doing exactly this. Putting money back to, to fund it. And so following with that, if we can do this, then, you know, we've already quit funding the, the plan that we're on. Uh, and maybe. I think we talked about it in, in the future, you ain't gonna need this hundred thousand dollars every year, so we will back off a little bit. Uh, but just making sure that there's enough money to fund the, the whole project, you know?
Yeah, just to be clear on the process, the county currently uses. Any employee, they're working that uh, is part of this original eighty-five, when they become. Uh, eligible or retired, the county begins funding. Those that retire, I mean, the interest for those employees, then uh, that's recalculated each year, how many you need to budget for. The employees that were part of that original eighty-five that leave, and then somebody else comes on, that's a wash, so you don't. But it's a. Every year, that's your budget for those employees, and what this hundred thousand is doing. Making your realization, there's, there's going to be people coming on uh, that, that are retired, that may not be funded for that retirement. For another. Fifteen years, twelve years, ten years. Two hundred thousand is basically setting the money aside for those employees, just like we did for that original uh. Eighty-five that accumulated uh, the two, three million dollars.
Have we pulled any money out of that at all, Patricia, so far we've kinda held our own with them?
Yeah.
That's good.
Of the court at the time was to um, get about two million in that fund. And then let it accumulate by uh, the interest earnings.
And so far, that's what we've done.
Uh, no money's being spent out of it, but it is accumulating interest.
But it's there in case you have a mad rush of people leaving.
And, and I think, what was it, Mr. Trishan, in twenty thirty-two? The eighty-five that are in that pool will be, everything will be completely. Safe, so, I mean.
So once the eighty-five retires, that's when that money and that.
Eighty-four, I'm correcting you.
When that eighty-four retires, that money out of that special fund, uh, retire, the insurance will be paid out of there?
Uh, the, the intent was, right now, insurance, let's say, costs nine thousand dollars a year. When that increase costs twelve thousand dollars a year, the supplemental cost between the nine and the twelve would come out of there. It's, it's for future budgetary impacts to keep that benefit alive. So that it's not. Flash, it's gone, but you have a source of funding without affecting the tax rate to maintain the, that benefit.
Could be funded earlier.
Yeah.
If you get people drop out.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm sure. I think it's, I think it's a good deal to put it in effect, uh, you know?
I'd like to see the numbers on the twenty, on the twenty. A twenty-year instead of twenty-five. I don't know the difference. How much, how much it would cost?
Well, it would be like.
Not really.
Um.
I go along with it.
Don't think it would.
I mean, twenty's good for y'all, good for everybody else, kinda deal.
Yeah, I, well, I think.
Yeah.
No, no, I, yeah, I know.
It would be the same amount, because we're paying, we're paying for it anyways, whether it's twenty or twenty-five, that'd be the same cost.
The, the difference becomes if. You hire a young employee, let's say, a twenty-year-old employee, at twenty years, at forty. The county would be paying for the rest of the life of a forty-year-old.
Yeah, right.
Uh, versus the rest of the life of a forty-five-year-old. So the cost is not this initial cost, the cost is the long-term cost.
Twenty-five.
And are you looking, is, is the county still to pay the insurance for someone that young? Uh. For that extended period?
Yeah, that's, that's the, the tricky part for me, is that this is what, remember back in the, what, nineteen nineties, early two thousand, when Gatsby. Forty-five or thirty-five, whichever one, I think it was forty-five came out, found out that everybody was upside down, we all had these unfunded liabilities out there, we were just. Writing numbers and hence what we started doing here, so. That's the only concern for me is that. It's super expensive to keep these, super expensive to keep these up. Uh, I'm not a, I'm not a hundred percent opposed to it, but per scenario is exactly what, I mean, it did, you know, I left City Huntsville at forty-eight years old. And uh, they wrote me a very nice check for a, a long, 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 long time, so um, when you sign up for it, that's a commitment, so. What I didn't see in here was what we had talked about, talking about a lump sum. On the, on the retirement also, that's about the same price, about a hundred grand from what I remember, right?
Hundred and twenty-five.
I would like to see those two side by side, because that's a, that's a twenty-year program. That a twenty-year-old employee that comes along and retires at forty years old. Goes to TAC instead of to us, and through their retirement. They get a nice benefit that's payable. To a forty-year-old, that we're not on the hook for the next twenty-five years financially, but can be very nice to them, so I would like to see that, at least we can discuss them side by side.
I, I don't, yeah, I, I don't mind looking at it, Bill, my big hang-up on that was, is. TAC, if we agree to that, we could never un-agree to it.
Now, that's gonna be through TCDRS.
Oh, that's, that's our retirement, yes. That, that, that was a hundred, that was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars locked in from now to doomsday.
That's what this is also.
Well, yeah, but you're building a fund for this.
Theoretically, like I say, about half the country went broke in the nineteen nineties, two thousand.
They didn't have Patricia money, did they?
Yeah. That is true. So I mean.
But, but that was my only drawback on something like that, I don't mind presenting.
This is, I mean, when you, you tell your people, we quit in twenty thirteen. We're gonna crank it up again, and we promise we're gonna keep it up this time, you signed on for the rest of your life also.
Oh, absolutely.
You were the same thing, and insurance ain't gonna go down.
You signed on for the current employees.
But you.
About back to twenty thirteen.
Nothing says that you at some point can't.
Can't stop.
Can't stop.
Yeah, I mean, you can do what we did, you, if you get to where it's a financial problem, you just have to shut it off, but.
But where we got.
But you wanna maintain the ones that you promised them to.
And that, and that's why, like to lay them side by side, I say a person who's. Thinking about leaving at forty-five years old, you know, look at, you know, look at, is, is insurance better for them, or is a lump sum check better for them? Um, I think it's a good conversation.
Yeah, I thought about leaving at forty-five too, and I figured out real quick, couldn't afford it.
Well, you can, but that's.
If you give me a lump sum, I might be eighty-five.
I'll tell you something. On a, and, and you may not know how much it is, but when you, that's how much you've seen before, but. Under TCDRS, you can get. If you do a lump sum, you can get up to three years of your retirement benefit paid for you the day you retire. I mean, if you're making thirty thousand a year in retirement, they'll give you a check for almost a hundred thousand dollars when you leave here. And it reduces your retirement a few hundred dollars a month, two, three hundred dollars a month. But that does make it affordable, you can pay off your house, your car, your credit cards and. Be debt-free and for three hundred bucks a month.
Yeah.
So it's worth, I think it's worth looking at, and it's a goal, I mean, when I was at. You looked.
My place I love so much.
You looked at that twenty years as, as a place to get to, because soon as I get there, man, I qualify for that, twenty years in the age, I qualify for that. And um, that's a quite, quite a carrot, this here is. I hope I make twenty-five years. And I may never use it, cause I'm gonna have Medicare if I'm sixty-five, and it's gonna be a secondary to me now, so. It's, that's why I think, I think we lay them side by side and talk about them side by side, I'm not opposed to this. But I like to look at everything at the same time, side by side.
I'm, I haven't been old enough, been here long enough, I remember the original conversations and. The reason why, I believe it was more than it went to twenty. Uh, for uh, a reason and, and get back to the judge's question, comparing twenty to twenty-five, need to compare, compare twenty to twenty-four.
I mean, we can, we just picked twenty-five, again, um, it can be any number that y'all choose.
Not digging up the past, but Buddy Reynolds was a big influence in that.
That's. Point.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a good plan to look at, I'm not.
Twenty, twenty-five, two terms. Uh, cause twenty to twenty-five is two more terms.
Exactly. That's exactly.
Yeah. And it's not just, it's not just this. Every employee under that, like.
Absolutely. I, I've, I've chased this up to you for years, and uh, I brought it up several times, and I wanna thank Mr. Trishan, Amy, and, and Chief Whitecotton for. Actually sitting down and, and putting something together that we can present to the court. Cause uh, like I said, and Bill too, we drove Bill into it, because I knew Bill was gonna throw a kink in my plans.
I, I thought of.
I might wanna call him from the kitchen here. You're a boss here.
One thing too. The discussion actually brought up, uh, Commissioner Department House, and the, the goal uh, was to encourage longevity and.
Absolutely.
Not to retire, so which approach? Does the court think that best accomplishes that goal? Early pay out of retirement? Insurance, I don't know, you know, that would be a court decision, when you're looking at what's your goal.
But, you know, we're looking at spending a hundred grand a year. And what, uh, a one percent raise is two hundred. Seventy-three. Seventy-three thousand. Um, that's pretty, if we can get, stick to that hundred, that's a pretty dead-gummed big benefit.
Well, like I said, when you, when you do the numbers in the beginning, and you take and you try to, it comes out tough, scary, scary number. But once you break it down and, and get to the nuts and bolts of it, to where you see how many people you're actually funding, this is, I think, pretty sufficient.
I'd like to see that nuts and bolts.
Yeah.
Which I worked up at some point, sorry.
I'll say that.
This affects you too, buddy. Okay. Phase two sixty-three. Go ahead, Mr. Phil.
I was up searching for something, getting.
You, you need it?
Uh, I think, pretty much what we got on here.
Look right there in front of you.
Go ahead, we.
Asking for new Tahoe, the old one we have now is two hundred and forty thousand. Uh, so. Uh, so, another one's got a hundred and fifty thousand miles. And I still. But we'll have to end up swapping vehicles, but if you don't get one, then we're gonna have two more out once at the same time. So, let's say, Tay, when you get one, uh, some sheriff might be in here, but, uh, it's almost two years before you can get on the road. And you get it digged out and get it over here. So, that's gonna put us way behind eight ball then, in fact, my car right now, sitting at Weezer's right now, getting work.
The, the only question I had, uh, was the video, the radio, the radar, are we not interchanging them, or we're not talking about one car putting the other one?
At one time, we were, I was gonna ask for a dent, another one, and that would have had to go into another vehicle, but I have no, so, uh, and there was another deal that we were kind of working on, too, with the payment stuff and everything, too, so, uh, I had a lot of uncertainty on that, so.
Well, reading this, it reads that we're putting another full unit on, that's, that's why I'm asking.
If, if I can get one without having to add on somebody else, at one time, we were talking about having one person for available to help out with precinct on papers also, but, uh, if I don't have to do that, then I can interchange parts from that other than the ring. And, and, uh, the watch guard, the watch guard is old style watch guard, it's, the one I have, the two, one of us got two hundred and forty thousand miles, one's a two thousand, well, I was thirteen, but it's in between, so.
Yes, you need a full bill.
Well, if I, if I can just replace that vehicle.
Yeah.
Then I'll have a radio and a watch guard.
Take the two forty out.
I will, I do need, definitely need a computer for my reserve unit. It's an old car we had, we were trying to do the emergency repairness deal, have to short show thirty minutes into it, whole thing went bad, so. Okay, and I had to jump it off this morning to get it, so.
Got a master kill switch. I got them on all my old junkies' vehicles, stops the shorts. All right. That all you asking for, see?
Get a whole bunch of miles on it, and replace a whole bunch of them at one time, wait, since we are covered, so the majority of the papers, you know, kind of, it's not like we're sitting still.
Yeah, obviously.
So, I'm good, man, appreciate it.
That's it?
That's more than that.
All right, appreciate you, thank you.
Sure. Cheryl? One seventy-one. One seventy-one? I think we just started, uh, first one, re-class, re-classification starts.
So, we are, um, I am requesting to reclassify my purchaser two from a one oh five, it's a one oh five to a one oh eight, uh, to keep up with the, um, I guess, the, the, this training and the support, and, um, she has a lot of knowledge that per, that position right now, and has a lot of knowledge that she brings to the table, and I'd like to keep her, if it's at all possible, and reclassifying that position would allow me to do that.
So, what, what do you got, two employees, Miss Cheryl?
I do.
So, you're just asking for one, right, and to reclassify one, or not, not both of them?
We reclassified, uh, the purchaser three last year.
Okay, I, I don't remember doing that, but we did.
We did, we went from a one-ten to a one-eleven on the purchaser three.
So, the one you're doing this time is what, like?
Purchaser two.
The, the two.
Yes, sir.
Trying to think who's who, but, you don't need to call nothing, so, it's okay.
And that was, that was that one, is the reclassification.
Yeah.
And, uh, the next one is, uh, I had, and y'all had graciously approved my temporary part-time position. I've gone through interviews, I have one more interview left to hire that person through the end of the year for the temporary, but I'm requesting it to be a permanent part-time position come, uh, October one. And that would, uh, again, allow, uh, my purchasers to do, uh, the purchasing, and, uh, she will help, or that person, I'm sorry, she, he, I've had applicants of all, uh, uh, will allow them to support our purchasing staff, and allow them to, uh, keep providing the county, uh, with the, um, I guess, the knowledge and purchasing that y'all are used to, and keep y'all going.
I, I know you come on board, but then, at one point, didn't we take an employee from you?
And, and, when, when I first got here, I think I was here for a month, and it was gone the next month.
Just like bye-bye, or what?
Yes.
It was a secretary position.
Okay.
That, that had never been hired.
That was fair.
It was a clerk position, that was.
We took it and spent the money and regular budget.
Yeah, I knew we took, I thought there was a position that never filled up there, whatever party you're coming, but, uh, it just went back in.
General phone?
Uh, general phone, or wherever, whatever we did with it.
Just absorbed it into the, to the TAC, to the new.
But after getting into it, I, I would really like that, a part-time back anyway.
So, the part-time's gonna be with no benefits or benefits?
Part, if it is a permanent part-time, it will have benefits.
Not in shots, but.
Not in there, but.
Okay.
Retirement stuff.
It, it would be according to the policy, and there are limited benefits with a permanent part-time.
Okay. So, we'll let you know if we have more questions.
Thank you.
You will.
Mr. Durham?
Well, our, our, our Tommy's.
Good to see you all this morning.
Good morning.
Two-twelve.
So, I'm gonna talk about our victim coordinator position, and then Quentin can talk about our, our research subscription, and also a modification to our legal support staffs. Uh, so, the first thing is the grant for the misdemeanor victim assistance coordinator, uh, we have been applying for this for many years now, I started, after I took office in nineteen, I think we got it in twenty, uh, it's been paying a hundred percent some years, and a large portion in other years, uh, I've told you all every year, we'll keep applying for it as long as we don't keep doing it, uh, we've been ranked number one before, but this year, we ranked pretty high again, so I feel like there's a good chance we will get it.
Just one through H C.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Okay, and I remember calling you about it, talking to you about it, it seemed like we ranked, well, to thirteenth out of a hundred?
Yeah, it's really good.
Something like that?
Yes, thirty.
Huh?
Thirty.
I was giving you credit.
So, that's what that would be, that person does every, handles victims of misdemeanor assaults, uh, and does all protective work, so it's a very busy job, and a very needed job, we have one for felonies and one for misdemeanor, and, uh, and then the, the extra part of their position is, they have, uh, never had cell phones stipend, and like they should have, but figuring that out this year, all the attorneys do, and the investigator do, and these two ladies that are our victim assistance coordinator, always on the phone, victims coming in, and they're having to call them from various, uh, locations during the day, so we would ask if y'all could fund them that thirty-five for those two, eight hundred and forty dollars. Um, that's it for the, for the victim assistance coordinators.
Okay.
The, uh, two requests that I wanted to make to you, the Lexus, these, I came a couple of months ago, we talked about that, we started the contract, that's the cost increase, basically, that, uh, that will cover the next year, we mentioned to you when we came a couple of months ago, that the, the cost increase actually starts tomorrow, and we're using our own budget money to cover that gap between now and October first, that's that. The last request is actually a fairly small one, but it's, it may sound complicated, but I don't, I don't, I don't try not to make it complicated. We have currently a position hot check coordinator that's funded at pay group one oh seven. We have one legal assistant two position, which is in pay group one oh nine. What we want to do is not fund the hot check coordinator at one eleven, we want to create a new legal assistant two position at the one oh nine level, which will result in a net savings of about six thousand dollars. And then, we want to take that six thousand and the other twenty-three hundred, I think I have on my request, we have three legal assistant ones, and we have three legal secretaries, they're all in pay group one oh seven. We want to take the three legal assistant ones and move them up to one oh eight, so, with the savings from dropping down of the hot check coordinator to a legal assistant two, and a little bit more, we can move those three people up, those positions up, and there is a real difference in our office, our legal secretaries, they work in our office, there are entry-level positions, the legal assistant ones and twos, they go to court and they're dealing with felonies, and so, it's, it should be, it is a promotion to move from secretary to assistant, but right now, we don't have the ability to distinguish that, and so, that's what, that's what that is.
We can kind of see this coming, because the amount of checks that people are writing is way down, so the amount of hot checks people are writing is way down. Now, there's other ways they're, they're stealing, but.
We're not, we're not going to dispense with.
Right.
The hot check function, we're gonna continue to do that, but that person who's doing that now is now, when I came all those years ago, because by the way, it's not gonna be eighty-four, it's gonna be eighty-three. We, our hot check coordinator, that is literally all that person did, and another, this actually spent half their time doing. Now, it represents a probably five percent of her time, and we are using her as a legal assistant two, and so that's, that's, that's the purpose of it.
There's still a lot of our local businesses that, that, that like people out, that service, so I, I'm gonna keep it in place as well.
I wouldn't say it's a lot, but we are gonna keep it in place for those that do.
Okay.
I can believe you all like chip. Yeah, what's wrong with them, y'all like the hot chip?
Some of the young people already know what a check is.
Yeah, tell me. Things these young people don't know.
Thank y'all.
Look at, you can look at this, this today's budget, and you see how much we have revenue for the first ten months of this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Chief?
Two-twenty-seven.
Let me get on board with Chief here, let me see what he's trying to do.
My, my favorite time of the year.
Hmm, yours and mine, but, I didn't even look last night, so, you got the flow.
Uh, the first request is, uh, the reclassification of the sheriff's, uh, the position, y'all, uh, funded it over the end of this fifteen years, so I have a request, uh, to put it in the budget, uh, from the one oh nine to the one sixteen.
Okay.
The second request is, uh, for rides and data card, going with body cameras, as well as, uh, mobile radio, that we talked about, so, and the increase, I funded it with grant money for the first year, so, but that'd be factored in on a budget.
I, I'm just asking, have we looked at, in the group rate for those things, or?
That's the great, that's the group rate, the person.
That's the group rate we're getting now? Okay.
Uh, the third one is vehicles, which is always there, I'm asking for five, uh, as of May nineteenth, when I prepared all the budget, I had ten vehicles that had between a hundred and four thousand and a hundred and eighty-five thousand miles, and they've gained more since then, uh, I've got five between seventy-five thousand and a hundred thousand, so, if they were bought, it, it never goes away. Uh, the, uh.
You're asking for five or seven?
I'm asking for five vehicles, it'd be three marked and two unmarked, but it's happening.
Top, we got you.
Yeah, they got you at seven.
I thought it was five marked and two.
Yeah, that's what I had read.
Five all the.
Three hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
I'll go with those if you have the money.
If you can get seven for three eighty-nine.
Like thirty-seven, but it should be five.
Five, the, the money looks like five.
What I put in.
And this says five, says, I thought it was.
It says seven here, okay.
RMS says, but this is five, three marked.
Yeah.
On the description.
You have that fixed.
But like I said, if you have the money, I'll take seven.
You good with that, I'll take it.
The, uh, the fourth item that I have is, is Eltron.
Like it is going.
It's a camera that will document three hundred and sixty degrees, as well as software and tablet, I'm with you. Going into crime scenes, you set it up, it will photograph it, like a total station, and I know a lot of y'all have used total station in the past. Software also allows me, or the detective, to go in and drop the photographs, we can give the whole presentation like a PowerPoint to the district attorney office. You go and click on a button, it'll bring up what items you, you can put any item in there, from a photograph to a report, or whatever you want, uh, the price, is a five-year price, you know, I did that, five years, it'll be old technology, so, funded for a five-year deal, will cut down on overtime, let's expedite our crime scenes, I set it in there, it'll spin around, it'll capture everything, and then you can work on the tablet, drop stuff in, and give this capability that we haven't had to process, and, and to the DA for their presentation. The, uh, true painion, bring you up a little steam, the true painion is, when we, when we purchased our K nine, I got the check through TAC and everybody and asking for, basically, lack of better term, health insurance for dogs, and, uh, checked with other counties, because veterinary costs are outrageous nowadays, if anyone's paid it, uh, checked with a bunch of my counterparts in other agencies, they're like, no, no, TAC will only pay for death or the loss of a dog. Uh, they won't pay if the dog's injured, they won't pay for any kind of medicine, rehab, anything, it does not pay for yearly shots, that's, that's not covered, everything else is covered, uh, all the way to hydrotherapy. Uh, I've been paying it out of my, out of my K nine budget, I've been, I'm gonna have to move money to cover it, but, I, I'm needing a, basically, a nineteen hundred and twenty-dollar increase covered for the insurance for the K nine.
How many do you have now?
I have one.
So, you found somebody that'll cover him on the insurance?
Yes, sir. I mean, you look at it, the initial asset was twenty-five thousand, but.
Yeah.
And, uh, a medical, uh, you know, the dog gets injured, they're, they're like human bills now.
Yeah.
I mean.
Just an office business cost, you probably three hundred something dollars, I imagine.
So, that's kind of what that true painion, when, when the insurance, not many people know about it, but that's what it's covering. Uh, RMS, our records management, is pricing increase of two thousand, uh, that's for, uh, two Adobe Pro licenses. I'm not really sure where y'all are at, but on my list, it moves into my Australian account.
I, I, back up just a minute, on, on the vehicles, Tim, wha- what are you hearing as far as availability?
Availability, they're opening, like, I've gotten a couple of emails saying that the window for twenty-five's gonna open up, uh, here in the next couple of weeks, uh, they're trying to push some twenty-fours, I'm getting emails that there's a lot of twenty-fours around that they're trying to get rid of, uh, kind of, you gotta jump in that window and get your, get your name on the list, so that they can bid out.
Last year, we ended up giving you a letter of intent, or approval for a letter of intent, are we gonna do that again?
I would like to do it, because that way, you can't say that we didn't get in line, uh, we got our vehicles in March, and, not too bad, they're actually in the shop in Houston, being upped it right now, uh, they promised me at the end of the month. Now, I'll believe it when I see it at the end of the month, but I have hopes and dreams at the end of the month, so.
So, that goes back to where we were over here with your numbers on your deal, we had ten of them over that, so we have five that's coming in to, to knock this list down some.
I have seven that are coming in, because pay for one, and I came, we, because the insurance, and some that were totaled, insurance covered, and I came and had money, time delayed, there's actually seven coming in.
Okay, so this list doesn't list quite, doesn't look quite as bad if you got seven coming in.
Well, it does, because there's a whole bunch that I have that are lower mileage, I only went down to seventy-five thousand miles. So, you're looking at fifteen, but I've got a fleet of about twenty-nine to thirty, that are under seventy-five thousand miles, that I didn't pull those numbers, so, like I said, the, the ten from a hundred and four thousand to a hundred and eighty-five thousand, well, there went seven right there.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree, I'm just saying this list looks a little better knowing we got seven coming in, I'm not trying to knock you off. Yeah, no, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree. I'm just saying this list looks a little better knowing we got seven coming in. I'm not trying to knock you off your five either. It kinda makes us look.
So you're thinking you'll be better, I mean, maybe a, a year now or a year and a half, or? Okay, that's what I.
You know, dreams and promises, what they all give us and, and the letter of the intent and, and I thank you the person in court for doing that. But there was little deal that we had with the supplement because I'm like, you had a letter of intent, you had a PO dated. Given the date, you already told me you were gonna order all the equipment. Cause that was, the, and the delays of all the equipment. They didn't do it. Imagine. I just call it like it is. They didn't do it. Cause I was trying to cut that time limit of actual getting the vehicles and having to wait another two, three months for equipment to come in. To get the contract, they promise you anything. Y'all have to deal with.
Yeah.
Well, yes, we're doing this.
Moving on.
The stray is next. Um, I'm asking for an stray, a bumper pool trailer. We have nothing. Uh, there's a lot of things that livestock deputy could throw in a trailer that we could manage ourselves without having to call the contract cowboy to come and work out their schedule. Uh, like I said, ads for aluminum last longer later. Uh, like I said, what, what we have. So again, we have nothing right now.
You know, precinct two assistant here a while back, getting the cow out of the mud on the freeway over. I feel like the sheriff's department owes me a meal or something. I got muddy, I got mud up to my knees.
Sound like a livestock deputy.
I'm glad you put it that way.
What's that jail food taste like?
I've had it before. I know what it tastes like.
But I've also reached out to our cowboy contractor. He's like, hey, I have no problems. I didn't want him to think we're trying to, we're cutting him out, cause he, he does so much.
I can tell you that you do not wanna cut him out.
Back for asking for more money.
He was in agreement. He's like, well, I kinda, I've always wondered why y'all didn't ever have anything. We've been having to contract when things leave precinct two to go to the auction. Uh, you know, like we have, we just don't have a trailer. So that's kinda where we're at.
I think, to interrupt you, I think this would be one that I would, I would have no trouble with you bringing that next week. And let's find, if you don't have it, I mean, it's, it's not, you're not asking for a person or a new program. This is just something I think that you could need. So why wait six, seven months to get the dang thing? I would, I would have, I don't know how y'all are, but I'd no trouble if you wanna bring it back the next court and see about moving forward with it.
Yeah.
We can find seventeen thousand dollars somewhere.
Wha- what do we got in contingency, Patricia? We still?
Uh, probably would need to go to our project contingency for this.
I don't really have an issue. Y'all got an issue bringing it back next door tonight, going away. I'm, you're good, you're good, Coach.
Whatever.
Well, there's, things are getting more expensive.
Absolutely.
Y'all do it.
You already went, you got some quotes and stuff already?
Have a quote from a goose name in, in my package.
Yeah. We're gonna need three for that? We're gonna need three quotes?
That's um, that's um, around.
That is uh, right there, miss you.
Yes.
Yeah, with Cheryl and.
I think they're the only one that makes that.
Yeah.
So how am I gonna get proprietary equipment? How am I gonna get?
You, you can get proprietary, just go share, you can get proprietary letter or flyboard or quotes or quotes and they can't quote it, but she can get, she can get you there.
We'll get it.
Okay. Alrighty. Trying to get it all worked out right now, so I'm coming back on Monday, next Monday or two.
You're gonna need it to us by Friday.
You gotta hurry, Tim.
Call your state senator.
The last item under courthouse security is uh, District Court bailiffs. Uh, District Court judges reached out and I think they were gonna come. Okay, oh, okay. And uh, problems and everything, and this is the only way the sheriff's office saw that we're gonna be able to fix the problem that was brought to me. Uh, so that's kinda where I'm asking Judge Horne to not turn it over.
What's the problem? Y'all got, y'all got the constables up there, so tell me what's going on.
So we are having court a lot more um, than you've ever had in the past. Um, David and I are still sharing a courtroom, so it's, it's hard. Um, I had a docket this morning in a small courtroom and he's got a huge docket in, in, in the big courtroom. When we do that, there's not, there's only, so the the constables are assigned for three months out of the year. Uh, each one supposed to be assigned for three months out of the year. Um, so there's not two bailiffs. Um, so I've I would really like a consistent bailiff uh, to it. At least one um, to be able to bailiff for our courts who understands and is available for every day for a docket. Um, it will be here from eight to five, after five if we're still having court, as I'm known to do sometimes. Um, yeah.
Well, I can't keep pulling from other divisions to, to fill in. Uh, you know, uh, have warrants division we use here and there, so to fix the problem that was addressed and brought to me. The only way that I see that I can fix the problem. Uh, I, I'm not gonna get in. I don't have any control and I'm, I'm just staying in my lane. And this is the way that I can fix it. Uh, because multiple times, there's two courts that are running, two district courts. Second of all, there's uh, training, multiple training, vacation time, sick time. So I'm trying to, even if they're not in court, when you look and say, oh, I may not need to. They still have to cover for the other person being in training or vacation or sick time and anything else. And uh, so that's where the numbers came from, as well as you have CPS court, you have Texas AG court, you have all that that's going on. And like I said, I'm at bare minimums in courthouse staff already. Uh, I can't pull from them. Can't, I mean, I'm pulling already from everywhere else and I can't pull anymore. I, I, I can't pull from patrol. They're already short. So again, the problem brought to me, this is the only solution that I solve that's in my control. And.
So does this fix where the constables are out? Just, y'all don't have to be politically correct with me. So just say it.
Correct on soon, right? So I'm gonna do that. Um, so.
That's where we're different, Judge. I really don't care what people think.
So the proposal that we, that Judge Mormon and I went to the sheriff's department with was uh, to repurpose some other, uh, another position inside the, the courthouse, but I understand why that doesn't make sense to the sheriff's department. So in, in my mind, it would be, we would get one sheriff's deputy and then the bailiffs would back up. Or I'm sorry, the constables would back up when we have big days or when we're both at each end of the hall. I understand the sheriff's department dilemma in, in that piece because if if a sheriff's deputy is the primary bailiff for the district courts and they need more assistance because it is a Judge Mormon has two hundred person docket today. I have a hundred and seventy person docket tomorrow. Um, or we both have court going on it, he runs the hall, then the deputy would need to call a constable and say, hey buddy, I need backup today. If that constable says, I don't have time or no, I'm just not going to do it, whatever the case could be. Then that deputy has no, there's no chain of command there for the deputy to say, Captain Wyckott, and they're refusing to show up. So the sheriff's department's response to that has to be to pull somebody.
Yeah, and, and I understand that one hundred percent from the sheriff's side of it.
That's why there's a need to have two.
So basically the constables is out, is what I'm getting out of this, right?
If, if there were if there were two, that, that would probably be the answer to, yeah.
Okay, Judge, I'm gonna ask you, why would we change? Why would we trade four? Elect, even though they are elected officials? As that have agreed to bailiff for y'all? To implement two more employees to, to bailiff for y'all? You know, uh, that's, that's where I'm hung up, you know? Y'all, y'all have an agreement with the constable. Um, and, and, and I'll tell you, my personal opinion on this is um, I know they're elected officials, but when they're in your court, they're your bailiff. And regardless if they're an elected official or not, I don't care. They're your bailiff. And I would like to see, I would like to understand why y'all can't work it out. Um, because you're wanting us to impose two hundred thousand dollars um, on the tax rate for something that I think could be worked out in-house. I mean, um, we, we have four elected, four, four constables that have multiple employees, that if they can't be there, even though the deal is with that department.
Stifened is not with the department.
Doesn't make no difference. They are the elected official of that department. They can dictate what goes on. Now, do they? No, in the past they have. Could they? Absolutely.
So only two of the four consto-, I'll try to address that in pieces as, I guess, best I can. Um, only two of the four constables have employees that work for them. Um, so that, that's an issue or could be an issue. Um.
Well, the other one does have a uh, other reserve type.
Kind of thing. I don't even know. I think that's for the sole purposes of being papers.
Yeah, but I mean, that frees him up to a certain degree.
Um, yeah, so when this agreement was made, well before, obviously before my time, since I've only been doing this job since January, um, when this agreement was made, back then, the district courts had one ancillary docket a month, so one big docket a month and one jury trial. Uh, and they didn't always have their jury trial. That's not the story anymore. And I know that the rate has increased through the years to try to compensate for um, the additional work. Um, it's just not the story anymore. So this, I think I have eight different docket aids on top of the week long trial that I have set. Um, and so in my opinion, a constable is elected, I think this is not just my opinion, I think it's by statute. Um, a constable is elected to serve his precinct or her precinct, whichever the case may be. Um, to serve JP court in that precinct and to serve the papers of that precinct. Um, I so when this agreement was made years ago, I think that the workload wasn't as much as it was in each precinct and I know that the workload wasn't what it is in the district. Um, constable should.
Let me hold you so you don't go down a road. Hang on a second.
Correct step.
Yeah, this, this is where I think. This is, I, I, this touches, it, it touches y'all's court, it touches the constables, it it, it touches, it touches the budget. So there's a lot of things that it touches and I think, and I agree a hundred percent what you just said, you know, instead of two a month, now there's forty-two a month. But so things have changed, things have scaled up and we haven't, we haven't, we haven't adjusted over here on the constable side as far as scaling up with it. So I kinda think that's where we're at is we need to build something or something, put something in place that fits what's here now. And I would like to see all four constables and the district judges and probably one or two of us from here, um, in the sheriff's office. Sit around a table like you're a hired consultant and say, if we had to build a constable, like if we had to build a bailiff system today, how would we build it? If starting from nothing, what would we do? And if it's the constables doing it, how are we gonna fix that? Cause it's not working. If the constables are out and hey, we need, now we need three sheriff's deputies because we have two and ones on vacation and one to cover. But let that group sit down like they were brought in to evaluate it like we didn't have one and let's see what tumbles out of it. I mean, I don't wanna argue back and forth here, like constables aren't showing up, constables are showing up, it's busier, it's not busier, that's, that kinda stuff. I think a little group, those people that it touches can discuss all that and then come back and say, hey, this is what we think. All, may not, it may not be unanimous, but this is what we as a group think could, could work. Then we have something to talk about. That, that's what I'd like to see. I don't know enough about it.
Well, I, I hadn't heard anything from the constables saying that they can't fulfill their duties to the, to the district clerks, uh, courts. Oh. I, I mean.
I'm getting emails from people that the constables can't do their job because they have to come here and do bailiff.
Well, I hadn't heard that from the constables. I think if that was the case.
I'm getting that from their citizens that they're telling it to.
Well, yeah, but not telling it to us. You know?
I've seen one email that was from one of the I can't remember, related to one of the constables said something he couldn't do his job prior to because of
Yeah.
da, 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 whatever.
Yeah, that didn't pertain to this.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't pertain to the, yeah. It was civil service on that.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I would do. I would put them around the table and say, put your, put your heart at the door and it's black and white on a piece of paper. And if they choose not to show up at the table, they live with the results that the table pens up with.
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree, Bill. That's what I'm saying. I, I mean, I just, I hadn't heard anything from the constables saying that they, they can't provide the service. You know, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I know they're busier though. I mean.
Yeah, uh, I, I've talked to some of them one-on-one, but I don't wanna talk for them in this courtroom.
I would neither.
Exactly.
Just like I appreciate the, uh, coming in and, and explaining all this.
Had to go up the black pole and I forget y'all bringing it. So it does open a door for a discussion. And I think, uh, to me, that's what I'd like to see before we do a whole lot of decisions on that is let that group that it touches and maybe even a budget person in the room with them and say, hey, here's, you know, it might cost us a hundred and fifty thousand a year, it might cost us nothing or something in between, but you have something that like, hey, at this current court level, this is what we need. Then we can, you scale it up, it gets bigger, but what we have right now is not really not really buildable as, as it, as, as the system grows until it hits this point where you're just, it's just where it is.
And so I, I've got another problem and I, I'm just gonna ask the question. These two bailiffs, when they're not having court, I see in there one time cost six thousand, so they're not gonna have a vehicle.
That's great.
The papers that come out of the district courts that are not getting served, can these two bailiffs help do that if we add a court of this?
Paper, what are you referring to?
Uh, there's a box that gets drug in this courtroom.
Uh, that's nothing to do with this court.
Yeah, that, that has nothing to do with district.
Yeah, that's nothing to do with this court.
But there's warrants that come out of district court that the, the warrant deputy doesn't go serve. That's why I was like, when you say papers, what are you referring to?
Yeah, that'd be you, right, Brian?
Unfortunately.
Let me point you out. That'd be your job.
Y'all's bail.
No, I think you've got a good idea.
I don't think you're looking at me sideways, so what can I answer?
Uh, I'm just, I'm, uh, I thought that the statutorily, that the JP court, courts out there were statutory, what the constables had to do. Other courts statutorily, how they served.
Uh, in Walker County, they're served by the constables, pardon.
I understand, but statutorily, how they serve.
Statutory is all of them. I guess I'd have to research to make sure, but uh, I think this is the one over eighty.
I'm just trying to figure out how we get another problem situated. If we have district court, we have court and they're, they're not all, not all courts are good, not, your, your court days are not gonna be from eight to five every day.
So might I suggest if we're gonna have a work group about bailiffs in the district courts, we might also end that same work group.
That's kinda.
So we're not discussing.
Because also even when they're not in court, you've got the annex that we still cover with these people here that they cover down there that they walk. You've got vacation that a bailiff can cover to work security debt. Or one in court might be able to get that they can pull out back in. So, I mean, sitting around twiddling their thumbs.
They'll be busy, I promise you.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to make that
Yeah.
deal. I'm just trying to include, if we're gonna have this roundtable discussion, let's include the other problem that we have in the.
I think with growth, I, I think with the growth of the county, I think y'all know better than I how many homes are being built each month in this county. Um, they don't come uh, crime free, family law free, seven free. Um, they all.
Something did just.
In my experience, they do not. Um, and so we are not gonna, I think, the issue of bailiffs. Courtroom space, courts, civil papers, all of those things are going to grow year by year, um. And we are, in my opinion, we are already behind, um. On preparing for that and I would hate for us to get even more. So I, um, I would. Happily be on some sort of work group to talk about all of those things and. Figure out how we can put Band-Aid on it for now and fix it in the future.
Alright.
That's all I got.
That it?
Thank you, thank you, George.
We got the jails coming under you.
Thank y'all.
I'm going to place three oh eight. We're gonna do the jail under.
He's hiding, he's gonna come up by himself.
Problem. We see you broke. Back up.
Man, I can't believe you brought backup, will you?
As far as that work group builds, if, if y'all do have a work group, we would like to be involved. Yeah.
I don't want on that because I'm a short timer.
That may be why you need to be on it.
Yeah, probably right.
First request, our first request is, is a uh, transport deputy in. The discussion we did. Is a lot of it because we get so many transports now, uh, out of state. Bench wards.
I see a lot of uh, stuff on this that we're paying for that y'all picked up all over the world.
Yes.
And that's y'all, right? Y'all the ones going after.
Right now, we've got, we've got two transport officers. Have a, a third that's actually a jailer, but he's a peace officer, so he's filled in and he, he works in the jail when he can and transfer. But he, he's ended up transporting more than he has worked in jail.
So is there a mechanism in place? And I'm just asking for knowledge here. Uh, if we've got a, a warrant out for. I don't know, they, they are speeding from there in. New York State and they're arrested. I'm just hypothetical, I don't know the exact term, but you got somebody sitting up there with a. Warrant out for the rest, it's worth five hundred bucks and it's gonna take us twenty-five hundred bucks to get them back. Do we go after that?
No, it's, and it depends on what the DA says. The DA wants them, we get them. I know, uh.
I I'm, I'm asking for knowledge.
Can we get it back from the future tips?
Well, I know what that answer is gonna be, but you see what I'm asking, are we trans, are we going after a transport? It's a, uh.
Okay, so what we do is we look at it and if it's some little state shell felony for a small amount of dope that the guys in Maine. It's gonna cost that much, we absolutely say, no, don't go get him, stays on the system, the warrant system in Texas, but we don't always go get every one of them like that, no. We do prioritize it. If it's a violent crime, you're damn right.
Well, sure, absolutely, a hundred percent. I'm, I'm with you on that, but something very minute that.
We have had time where we said, don't go get him. Keep the warrant active in Texas, take it off of the national database.
Okay.
For a, a little case like that, nonviolent. Yeah.
Okay.
And, and also when they transport to court, that officer has to stay there. And so. We're already down officers. If there's two courts. We have one left. That's, that's to do the inmates, which have risen dramatically. Uh, and just regular transport.
Transport is, it's busy. We have, uh. Girls who kind of keeps uh, track of all the transports, if you try to schedule everything out to where it works out, but sometimes it doesn't work out. And. Have to send a, a jailer with the transport officer sometimes. It gets to be a big mess, but uh. They'll keep track of it pretty well. That's that kind of area.
He looking at you, D R.
Can talk plenty of smack over here, but he, he can testify to it better than I can, but they, they are really busy.
Yeah, one of the things with the transport too, I mean, I, like I said, we have a third person, the person we're asking for is just make this person full-time. I, it's. I think we're still gonna be busy. We're, they're still gonna get overtime. It's because a lot of the out-of-state, they're having to take jailers with them. Because if that, that transport officer has to go to the bathroom, he has to have somebody to watch. You always have to have two people on these out-of-state transports. It looks like one of you talked about the mental health. Last year, we did a hundred and four mental health warrants. And we've figured out about four, they usually run about four hours, that's thirty thousand dollars in overtime. This year alone, just the six months, we've done seventy-five mental health. Transports.
Oh.
And another thing is with Huntsville being the head of a release and intake for TDC. We get a main, all the different states will call us and say, hey, TDC just called us, releasing an inmate that we have a hold on. Y'all go pick this person up and hold him for me. And it's nothing for us to go over there and pick him up and hold him for a couple of days, but while they're off doing their transport, I can't because all my transport deputy, one in Oregon, another one was in Florida. And as, as the judge was saying earlier, they're running a bunch of court. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're killing us.
So we're going to pick up TDC guys?
Well, I would pick them up because they're being released. They're being released from TDC and another state has a warrant on them. And other states are just calling, asking us to do the favor. Go pick them up and hold them. TDC is not real good about calling the states and letting them know a week at a time that they can get here. And it's really hard for some little bitty department in Maine or something. We, I just had, I was thinking of Maine, I just had one last week. And they're a little apartment, six.
But you're just picking them up in Walker County to hold them.
Yeah, I'm picking them up from the walls unit.
Yeah.
Picking up from the walls.
But that keeps you busy doing that.
Yeah, it wants what we do that, but we've been doing it for years.
Uh, in the backup here, you referenced if Senate Bill nine passed. I did not have time to follow up on it. Did Senate Bill nine pass?
Yes, sir.
And how's it gonna affect you?
Uh, I pass Mr. Quentin. Uh, he's gonna wait and see, but the, uh. Jail magazine is jail literature, but what they're saying is to plan for population increases. Uh, train staff on the public safety reporting system used by magistrates, but I don't even know if that. Uh, seek grants to help upgrades and staff. But they're, they're looking at it like our populations will rise. Because the, the. Judges are gonna be able to deny bill, uh. We're gonna have to bring people up here. I think some of the, some of the offenses, the district judge himself is gonna have to sit by. That, I think a lot of changes.
She's gonna go back.
It was just within the last two or three days that it passed.
Yeah, is this the one that's on the, the ballot in November also, right? Constitutional ballot, isn't it? Am I right back there? Do y'all know?
But I'm not sure if that one has to go on.
One of them, I think one of them is on the ballot in November also, jail reform. I know he signed it, but that, I think it authorizes to go on, but I don't know, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think it's, it's probably gonna pass. Everybody wants that guy to do it, but I think it's in November, um.
There's gonna be stricter bail, bail rules, so, I mean, I do perceive the population going up. I've, I've talked to people in the jail and they think it's gonna go up. Pretty well, pretty good. And like, uh, Quentin, who I, who's the advice I trust. He said, wait, yeah. Just a wait and see attitude.
Yeah. On your out-of-state transports, have y'all, have y'all looked into contracting that out? If you only, if you only do twenty a year, is it, what, what's the cost difference between having? A, and I don't know if it's even out there, I'm assuming somebody, there's a commercial company out there somewhere that does it.
Several.
So have y'all, based on your. On your nineteen out-of-state transports, if you had contracted that, had y'all, what, what was the price? I'd be, I'd like to know what the price of that would have been also. If we're sending a guy three, four days to drive up or whatever to go get somebody and come back versus calling Bob the bad guy getter. And then he just shows up three days later, that's a difference of operations for me. And it's, you know, stuff like, I don't know what the difference in price, I have no idea.
You gotta call a dog.
Cause we did, we looked at that a, a, a long time ago. I wasn't, when, uh, Detective Fisher was here, they looked at talking about that, about hiring an out-of-state. And I really don't remember a lot of specifics on it, but we did too many for to be cost efficient. And then they also have a time delay. A lot of times we had to go pick somebody up and it was. I, I don't remember what the rules was, but it wasn't something that was gonna be set, it's something to look at, I mean, there's a lot of them.
But I'd like to see that number.
Well, I think we're alleviating. And like I said, talking about population, you know, uh. You know, when we moved over this new jail, our average daily population was, you know, one sixty-eight is what we ran at. You know, in two thousand nineteen, we got an extra jailer, but since then, since two thousand twenty, since COVID, our average jail population's two hundred. And not only have I increased for my transport positions, because this ain't the first time I've come after transported. But not only these transport deputies are a lot more being put normal, they're having to take jailers with them, jailers that, well, I was already thin. I mean, big time thin. And I, I just, I really see it's gonna be very, very hard for us to keep maintaining and running the jail in a safe and efficient manner with the staffing that we have. I'm just, anybody, you can come look at it.
Yeah, do y'all ever get to the point where your ratio's off and you have to basically quit taking inmates?
Right now, we're not taking. If there, if it's an out-of-county parole, we don't take them. San County we do. And if it's a violent, it's like, but uh. We had to stop those because we get those. Two or three times a week where they're, don't have anything to do with Walker County, other things, visits or parole officer, which are based here. And we also have a Montgomery County.
And then, and then I guess they sit here waiting on.
Exactly.
See the.
Months.
Exactly.
Months and months.
Imagine that.
But they passed a bill that we could bill for that.
Yes, and, and the honorors office takes care of that, but uh, but they still ain't called.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't disagree. I'll make sure we're getting every penny and every nickel we can.
Have we got any money from that?
I don't. The.
No.
I can answer.
I think it's, I think it's after forty-five days. We can charge. But uh, I think right now we have seven in jail that, uh, are parole on. And uh, we both got people we can call and they try to uh, expedite them going to TDC, especially when the population gets up. We've got, um. Seventeen, uh, paper ready to go. And they're gonna pick up eleven this week. Uh, we did. It's just, it's a struggle.
I know that we do look at paper-ready inmates, but um, it's my understanding that. That is primarily for uh, a calculation in the uh, tax rate. Where, whether or not we're actually generating invoices, I don't know.
I remember that was a big push, I think, last session. That if, if the inmates are there and they're ready to go to TDC and THC doesn't pick them up within a certain time, you have the right to bill them. The state of Texas.
Yeah.
One at a time.
Yeah.
You're gonna get paid with your bill, I guess.
When I, when I.
Law you want.
When I talk to them, they, they have the funds set up ready to go, they just ain't got nobody sending bills.
So it's after forty-five days, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I talked.
I'll send that to you, Ms. Allen.
Somebody has to honor your lot, he said he keeps track of it.
Where's? But uh. Uh, I know that he was definitely keeping up with it, but uh, my understanding was sort of a tax rate calculation. Um, I'm not aware that we are actually generating invoices, but I will follow up.
I have the stuff in my office. I'll send you.
Alright, what else you got?
Yeah.
Uh, shifts are currently operating. One shift. At uh, not doing a bad job, but to have the authority to make decisions, uh, generally important, it's not gonna do that. And they'll have to call out, find somebody else, uh, but just to give a corporal that, uh. Sergeant position so he can have more to make decisions in the deal.
So you're asking for another body? You're asking to change the position? Body?
Cause I'll say, cause we have four shifts, we have three sergeants. So we'd like to put a sergeant forward, plus that's gonna happen. Bodies that.
So if it comes down to pick and choose, what's your most important?
The.
What you got? You got what, four of them here?
Yeah, the transport and the sergeant. Absolutely.
Transport.
And sergeant. Does it?
Roll them out.
Which one, which one you need the worst?
Throw it out there. Let me tell the judge, we ain't politically correct on ours.
Say what you want to say.
Well, let me just say this side, I can't talk for this side.
I asked this question last year and I'm honestly, yeah, I got laughed out of here. Let's get, get. Uh, how many of these positions would you need? To reduce our overtime in a jail? Uh.
He said sick.
That's what I thought, I heard him, but I can't hear very good. I think so. I mean, it's hard to tell though, too, because we don't know how to. Get four of them on light duty that get hurt. And we get inmates that get sent to the hospital and we get a bunch of transports, we have a special trial comes up. It's really hard for us to tell.
Do you need six and you're asking for three?
Well, I mean, we like to ask.
We're asking for.
Well, I didn't, I kind of had the transport deputy, he's, he's not in the jail, he's a licensed peace officer.
He's using though. He gets used for whatever.
I understand.
Now, as far as the overtime is concerned, I'm. Looking at that very hard to see if there's any changes we can make, like maybe a floater position. Take up the slack when somebody calls us sick, but people take off, people call in sick, uh, and people are hurt and. It, it is difficult sometimes.
Yeah, and, and you have to consider the environment they're working in. I mean, this, it's not a solution that you can just. Add six people, say that's gonna fix it because it might not, you know, I mean.
But there's gotta be some kind of correlation that if we put more people in, in, in. The overtime has to be reduced a little bit.
Yeah, but then sometimes when you put position in a, and you add all the benefit packages goes along with it, it's cheaper to pay overtime. I, I don't, you know, a lot of times these courts look at overtime like, oh, it's the end of the world, but sometimes it's not, it's, it's the answer to fixing some of your problems.
Yeah, honestly, it becomes a part of the income for the.
Yes.
They like it.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, in the shift work, you got to expect a certain amount of overtime, anything.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I think there's, there's things we can do and, and I am looking at it to. To get that down a little bit. I can't make any promises in numbers or anything, but just to look at it, because it, it is.
Software.
Software?
Guardian R F I?
Guardian or F I D, that's a handheld device, looks like a mobile phone, that's a, to go by and. Hit the little button and show that you check it, uh. It, it keeps track of the restraint chair, feeding, recreation, every, everything we did, paper log before. This little device takes care of it, you can print out reports on it in the.
Like meds and all that stuff too?
Yes.
It keeps up with what you're giving them and.
Yes. Well, take pictures with it, we make voice notes with it, uh. It's been a great help, uh, just recently it was a great help because the, the thing starts beeping. When you're down, you're about to miss it, miss the check. And one, one of the guys was doing something else, he couldn't make his check, so he, he put that thing steadily beeping at. He called somebody else and just says, would you go down and look at this? And they were, they were trying to commit suicide. And uh, had he just said, I'm not gonna do this and go about his business, I mean.
Or forgotten and it, it had been five minutes later. It would have been a totally different scenario.
We already have this and, and this is an ongoing cost, this is a.
Yes, that's, that's the uh, second year cost.
Okay. And all these checks that they talk about, those, those are the state mandatory checks that we have to do. And the state likes the idea, but. They can pull it up.
Okay.
It is. Sure.
Uniforms.
Uniform, it's asking for five hundred dollars more. Sergeant got together and basically what I'm. We just, we had a lot of turnover classes, I think twenty-five hundred dollars. And the change, but uh, usually what we do is try to. Somebody leaves, we get their clothes and the next person to wear, they got it.
You try to hide with the clothes, John, I don't know what you're saying.
I like it, hey, I like it.
It's just like, uh, I was thinking.
You gotta do it, I like it. And out of everything you said, that's what stuck with me.
Get some old bones.
Yeah, you hired a fit of clothes and the guy leave it.
The worst part of it is, we keep it in the hardcover.
Yeah. What about the food, did y'all, y'all been getting?
Food contract, uh, I think we're asking for a thousand one on the food contract, and that's just one increase.
Increase in inmates?
And, and, well, actually, when the inmates go up, the price goes down. But uh, I don't think they've changed, changed since last October.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing anything on the food changing in a while. Has that company been?
Yeah.
Costco.
Costco. That company been pretty decent? Y'all have good luck with that company.
They've had their problems, but uh, the, the manager, you call him, he'll come down next day from El Paso, he'll take care of everything. And so that has gotten a lot better.
They've got a lot better.
That's good.
Hmm.
All right.
No questions?
Not serving possible off the ropes anymore.
Uh, no more.
Just north, yeah, I think when I come here.
Back in the day, they used to. Yeah, damn right, yeah, Miss Dorothy was there. Yeah, everybody. You go before Miss Dorothy and Miss Arneita was there back in my town. They had squirrel dumpers and all that good stuff. I used to eat that quite often. Hey, I can't help it, I gotta say this.
Yeah.
They do have officer meals available, five dollars a pop. And uh, those are pretty good, but uh, there's not many times to get taken to that.
You have to go behind the closed doors to get that meal?
Yeah.
I don't want it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys.
Mr. Davis?
Butch? The room's spinning out a little bit.
I thought everybody's here for the end.
I'm last.
Oh.
I mean.
The mission support comments.
This is comments. Butch?
Yes, sir.
Shoot at us.
Well, my first request is I have two employees making the same amount of money. One of them's supervisor and one of them's not. I wanna raise my deputy coordinator from one fourteen to one eighteen. But she supervises. She's our supervisor when I'm there. And she has other responsibilities. And that would cost about uh, ninety-six hundred and ninety dollars a year.
That's benefits and all?
Uh.
Benefit package and everything?
Yes. So, I, that's my first request, move her up to pay uh, group pay one eighteen. Uh, uh, she, she is supervising when I'm not at, at the office, she's in charge. And she supervises other employees and she's making the same thing that one of the employees is making. So I don't think that's fair, and I might be needing to move her. Also asking for my second request, to want our cell phone, uh, six hundred more dollars, that'd be a hundred dollars a month. Uh, they seem to call us every time on our cell phones. They won't call off the phone, they call our cell phone. And they call her cell phone probably more, because she's such an active part of doing this FEMA reimbursement and state and everything, they're calling her more than they are me on a cell phone. My third request is just to uh, the tower, uh, we signed a contract with the tower, the old Burman Tower, we signed a contract with a new company uh, uh, in twenty twenty, and the price goes up three percent until it reaches a hundred and twenty-five percent. And that's a hundred and ninety-three dollars ongoing for next year, if we'll have to raise that up.
Butch, I got a quick question for you. Back uh, before we had this uh, when we had Sherry and uh, Sonia, what was the pay difference between them two?
Well, when, when we made the pay group, and they come out with the deal, Sonia could have been making the same thing Sherry was, but it was latterly given to me the decision. So I only up, upraised Sonia up ten thousand instead of fifteen thousand, which would have made her make the same thing that Sherry was making. I didn't give her a full fifteen thousand. That answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that was just kind of a position we moved out there.
Moved out there during, during a disaster, we got there and then we got stayed out there.
There were some other details, but we'll leave them out. I'll leave them out.
Uh, in my old line uh, system, I, I upgraded it and y'all approved for the upgrade, I paid out a budget, what it cost this year upgrading, the next year it's gonna go up three thousand dollars, and I'm asking for three thousand dollars in next year, like play my old line system. And you know, uh, several years ago, y'all gave me a planner and it was a part-time position. Uh, the plans have got so much that I need to make that a full-time position. Uh, that planner uh, works twenty hours a week, it basically works four days a week. And uh, I really need him there more to work, because we have the uh, community wildfire protection plan coming up for uh, reworking this next year. Just rework basic plan of emergency management plan. And we have several other plans, the uh, damage, uh, damage assessment plan that we have to do. And also the debris plan has to be redone in the next year, so I'm asking to uh, bring him to a full-time position instead of a part-time position. And I'm asking for an additional vehicle. Uh, because we've got three vehicles, we got five people and we're sending them to different directions. And I would rather send them in a county vehicle than in their personal vehicle, because that is to me is more cost effective, because they go in every vehicle. Oh, fifty-eight cents, how is it now?
I don't know, it's fifty-nine, fifty-eight.
Seventy cents a mile.
It, it costs me quite a bit of money out of budget to send her and reimburse her for her, her fuel and everything, so I'd like to uh, get an additional vehicle, then I'm gonna need additional money in my fuel vehicle and additional money in my.
Three sixty-five.
Okay. Um, I'm only here to answer, but I, I don't know. Super complicated, I, I do on one item, because have some official information related to the staff engineering position. And then to previous conversations about what that position might entail. And other than that, I mean, I'll answer any questions about anything on my list that you guys have questions about. I have more your time.
Tell me about your computers.
Those are just based on the cycle.
Three sixty-five.
So every time we send out type foods, the recommendations off, we have some function issues uh, with some of the older computers, we run a lot of software that uses a lot of memory mapping and that kind of stuff, so sometimes those. That's, that's just based on recognition by two.
Why don't you put that on next agenda to bring that back?
Okay.
Do I got anything else?
Next.
So, you know, so the only other thing we know the sheet, um, benefits, uh, I don't think the county, to my knowledge, has ever had a staff engineering position. We, we, we had, almost had one, but not in the contract position right now. Um, could potentially decrease in time, in our timelines, obviously. Add some additional technical side in that department that would be helpful. Um, uh, I would need to, if you guys are looking toward possibly funding that this year, I would need to get a little bit of information for you guys in addition that, that I uh, get related to if we want that person to do the actual design work and seal and how that would impact. Since we normally have never had that, even when we had our consulting engineer do steel drawings, it was all the same there firm and then. So if we actually had that person do some small design work for some of our civil stuff or road and bridge, whatever, would we need to roll something in on our engineering cover? That's, that's possible.
So what's, what's the benefit of this versus just having our contract?
Well, the, the benefits are, are um, that you have somebody who's on staff who can assist with all those technical decisions, that has all that technical knowledge. Well, not all of it, but has a, a, a firm grasp of all that technical, they can take some of the lower lying engineering issues that require an engineer to review, but are, are not super time intensive, right, and turn those around in, in shop, in-house. Um, they can provide guidance when needed for stuff like our contract. So when we go out for contract, for example, we just went out for contract for, um, just went out for an R Q for uh, geotechnical engineering. So you have a staff, you have a staff person who's got an engineering background, understands all the technical ins and outs of their profession. I don't pretend to, I've been doing this a long time, but I don't, I'm not, I'm not an engineer. They can provide technical input on those R Q processes, they can provide liaison activity with our existing engineers. If you need engineers inspections, you're not always having to contact, contract out for one. Advice on policy creation, those kinds of things, you can use your in-house person, uh, leverage them more than we have in the past. Um, basically just this, this sort of these two lists are the things that I think we're, can get a benefit. Long-term, as counties grow, eventually you're gonna end up with this position. It's just kind of a matter, matter of when to pull up, the timing right, so it's helpful. All right, you got follow-up questions, you know, I can answer them anytime, yes, absolutely, I, I didn't want to bug you down with this stuff, the software and that stuff. Okay. Any other question or anything else on there, we go ahead and answer them or go over.
Not at this time, anyway.
All right, Andy, one question, you got in here for the, the body cameras for the year.
Yes, it's not the same, I know.
Okay, all right, well.
So we have, we, we, the, the ones that we're requesting are the ones that, that matches the ones that we have now.
Yeah.
The software that we have now.
Yeah.
So we're able to get a cheaper price for, for our small department. What may make sense for the SO, I'm a.
Yeah, no, I get it, I, I just, I knew there was a big difference in the front.
That's why.
Okay.
It does not have the functionality, this is not an apple to apple to what the SO was, was asking you guys for, for sure.
Are you the ones you got now bad?
What's that?
Are the ones you got now into life, they bad? Okay.
Okay, that's the only question, I just, there was a big difference in the.
I wanna be clear, it's not a better deal than the SO's getting necessarily looking at apples and oranges.
Yeah.
It's an apples' door.
Yeah, they got a different function there.
You don't bring that next time? With your computers?
Yeah, but right. Yeah. Turn it right now. All right.
Any other questions, Randy?
He's still got those stuff, what you got in?
I think I explained everything else.
Okay, you did, maybe I wouldn't listen.
I got something there about the stories, you guys, any questions about that? I'd advise you to just look at later ones, so.
Would do, okay.
Thank you, man.
Andrew. He comes in. He was a colleague. Oh. I can't remember, not that. Structure that he. I can't remember, but he's an engineer, man. I don't know why he's in us.
Just fuck around.
He's probably trying to get the camera.
Fifty-three.
It's the patient.
Fifty-three?
Two fifty-three.
No, fifty-three.
We're in the low section, yeah, Dan's up in the front.
Making way for the light.
Yeah, he's in the front of the page and he had to be at the last of the children.
Yeah. Dan, none of your stuff's one time, what's the deal?
Okay, so uh, my first item is uh, the annual professional support. Uh, it's used by multiple departments in the county, uh, so that's just to cover the current licensing and software coverage. Going up by twelve forty-one. Uh, item two is our uh, subscription and licensing for navigator, uh, courts and justice system. Uh, ongoing cost is increasing ten thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars.
I have a question.
Sir?
I'm gonna just, I'm getting tired of me asking questions. Five percent increase is ten thousand dollars. Is this proprietary or is this something when you look at and, and?
Ain't nobody else.
Uh, it's proprietary, that's, that's answers my question.
He talks everything, everybody wants to get it.
Item number three, uh, it's, uh, our VMware software licensing, uh, license. Uh, that's for our uh, virtual server also, it includes the uh, virtual servers for the uh, new phone system. So that's why it's uh, increasing quite a bit is because of the phone system that we implemented last year. Ongoing increase of thirteen thousand three sixty.
About a.
Yeah.
My girl.
Uh, item four, this is our volume licensing for Microsoft. Uh, just to give you all, um, the last mission report, I brought an item to have uh, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five G three licenses purchased, and you all had a question about why it said Adobe slash Microsoft. Uh, the reason that is, is that Texas DIR contract is for all Adobe and Microsoft products under that contract. Uh, what we were purchasing only was Microsoft.
So that brings up one of the questions I have, well, on this whole sheet, we've got a bunch of Adobe. Why didn't we not consolidate them all?
Yeah. They're consolidated under a Adobe Pro, so the pricing is consolidated. Uh, currently, the IT department actually makes the purchase using my county credit card. And then it is broken out into individual departments to be applied to the budget by the auditor's office.
Okay, because all the, all the prices in here, what people turn in, they're all different.
Uh.
Maybe a really question.
The, the year subscription, if it's Adobe Pro, the, the subscription price for an entire year is the same. Uh, the problem is when they do their initial purchase, all the purchases is prorated for whatever time remaining until the next renewal. So when they make their initial purchase, it's a prorated price versus a, on, a full year price. Okay. Uh, and then with the volume licensing, um, I am working with S H I to book confirmation. Um, so the ongoing cost that I have listed was fifty-five thousand and that was for the licenses. That will probably be increased, um, because the, the quote that they gave me, it was prorated. And so I'm thinking the actual full year price, I'm waiting on confirmation and a, a correct quote from S H I will be no more, hopefully than one twenty-three, a hundred and twenty-three thousand, not the fifty-five. So I'm waiting on documentation to get this one correct.
Seems a lot of difference, man, couldn't say how. It's a lot of difference.
Right, the, the quote that they supplied, it was for six months, so it's basically doubled what. So there was miscommunication on my part on that.
A little technology.
Damn, we need to go back, big chief, haven't we? Damn, we need to go back, big chief, haven't we? At least we could find them. Yeah, I won't sell them.
Court gets to, to October.
Uh, what we improved in court, uh, and we, we put in the, the purchase. Uh, it goes, it's not till October, it would go through December first when our Microsoft renewal. Uh, kicks over. So it's, that's for a five-month period. And the quote, when, when I, the initial quote I gave you was for six months. By the time we actually got it approved and made the purchase, the price is actually for five months. So what will actually pay, what was approved will be a little bit less.
Okay.
Alright, uh, item number five. Is, uh, ongoing Cisco, uh, license and support for our new phone system. Um, this is, you know, uh, when we did the, the phone system implementation, we did it out of project funds and. We did not, uh, count for the ongoing licenses when we approved that, so this is asking for additional funds of thirty-three thousand. Five hundred for the new phone system licenses and support. Item number six, uh, informer cast paging, um, this went up by three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, the, uh, this paging is the B A juvenile, uh, I think the jail, they set up. Uh, it gives you the option of using the telephone system as a. Um, the minimal quantity that they sell now, uh, we used to pay for a hundred and fifty licenses. They have, uh, required us to do a minimal number of two hundred and fifty licenses. Uh, so we can actually get the, the courthouse, we can set that up and use those additional licenses for other locations as well. Item number seven, rapid recovery, uh, this is for our backup solution. Uh, we were not in compliance with their number of licenses that we got fixed on last commission report. Um. Then ongoing. Uh, this is outdated, um, should be. Fifty-one hundred, okay, uh, yeah, the ongoing cost for the amount of. Uh, fifty-one hundred, uh, and that is based on total, uh, storage that we're backing up, not the individual servers. So that, that gives us more flexibility.
Which one you on there?
Uh, this is item number seven.
Should be fifty-one?
Yeah.
I like the eighty-two better.
Yeah, I like the eighty-two dollars, I'd be for that.
Right?
Yeah.
Like my little girl, you sure are expensive.
Hmm.
Uh, and those best things with all the county line, uh, and.
That's just filthy gut, that thing.
Yes, sir.
On the line there.
Sixty-seven, where the? It kind of jumped. Seventy-three, I'm sorry.
I just did seventy-three. Eighty-two.
My seventy-three for, uh, conference and training. Yeah, item number eight. Um, in the past, I've utilized Microsoft, uh. Microsoft thing, uh, gave us training about. Licensing. Uh, Microsoft no longer supplies those vouchers, so, um. Our budget would. I'm asking to make that five hundred, just so we can go to, uh, more training. And open hundred. Again?
You're saying the eighty-two, the eighty-two dollar?
I'm asking to increase it to five thousand. I'm sorry, yeah, the old number was four hundred, I'm asking to increase five thousand.
Through my line.
Uh, and that's just so we can, uh.
Starting that one.
I don't see that we need to go to a conference. You know, this, this past year, I went to the TAG, uh, I T management conference, Texas. Uh, I did, uh, leadership support well, which I had to, to move mu- money around in the budget in order to get that done.
Before you come back into that.
Uh.
That's that H A C one. That's an H A C one.
Uh, item number nine, uh, right now we use, uh, A D manager. It's not the pro version, uh, I use it to, uh, generate reports on number of users, uh, computers, operating systems. Uh, it's very handy in that case. Um, there's a pro version that, uh, would allow, uh. Scheduling of these reports instead of have to do it manually, even we could have like, once a month, every, every month, uh. You know, inactive users report. It'd be easier to manage and maintain user accounts and computers to ensure that nothing's inactive or, you know. If, if account needs to be disabled, it's easier to monitor that. Uh, on top of that, um, it would give, uh. The, the ability for, uh, newer employees with less experience, a safer way to do user creations. Um, right now, uh, inactive directory, we do it manually in, in the system itself. Um, this would just give us a safeguard and a, a easier user interface for newer employees with less experience, so they don't accidentally delete something. Or change permissions that shouldn't be changed.
But this is all up under, uh, T, right?
Well, the I T department would utilize it, but it, it would be in service of the entire county. To maintain active directory.
But you said change and manipulate or whatever, I didn't think we had access to, uh, uh. The rest of us in this room wouldn't have the same access that you have.
No, no, this is, this would be limited to I T staff only.
Okay.
And that's a cost of twenty-eight eighty-five. Um, now, also those numbers were for, um. Four, why is that tech licenses? Uh, option two is for two tech licenses, and that would have been a cost of twenty-five forty-five. Uh, my book skips from number nine to number eleven.
Page eighty-two?
Page eighty-two, yes, okay. Uh, SolarWinds Network Performance Monitor. Uh, this is a, uh, software that I would like to purchase through the I T department. Um, it would give the I T department the ability to monitor. Um, it's two thousand elements, um, and element could be. Uh, a network interface on a device, so. For example, a network switch that has forty-eight ports is not one device, it's forty-eight ports. And so calculating the number of switches throughout the county, uh, we would be in the fifteen hundred range of elements. Uh, but with the, the licensing that they offer, it, it goes from one thousand and then jump to two thousand. So this, uh, basically would give us real-time monitoring access and capabilities. Uh, we'd be able to, um, implement alerts if, uh. Unknown devices pop up on the network. Um, it gives more in-depth, um, ability for troubleshooting performance issues, uh, in the network. Uh, discover devices, uh, performance metrics. Basically, it's, it's a, a, a tool that we can use to, to troubleshoot and improve network, you know, security and performance. That we don't, uh, currently have. And the cost of that is eleven thousand seven fifty. All right, item number twelve, SolarWinds Network Configuration. Um, this sounds similar, but it's different, this actually is for, um, it's a software that helps maintain. And ensure that all your network devices are configured in compliance with whatever standard you're following. Um. It's, it's a centralized location where you can, um, update and correct, uh, configurations on multiple devices. Uh, it's not device specific, uh, most of our devices are Cisco, but it also supports other networking brands. Uh, it helps improve. Uh, network reliability and security, uh, can help make sure that, uh. Uh, configurations are frequently applied. Um, just to give you an example, uh, we have to be very careful with, uh, updating the network. Uh, I was doing V LAN, um, updates one time, and if you disable the wrong V LAN, you can basically break part of the network real easily. And then you have to go out on location in order to get. Get access back to, to re-enable it. So, uh, we're very cautious with what the updates we do make. Uh, this would just make it easier to update and make sure all devices are, uh, compliant and configured the same way. Um. And the cost of that is eighteen hundred fifty dollars. And those are subscription-based, pretty much all new software, it's not a buy it one time and you have. Have the fans go into a, a annual subscription-based, you know, licensing, uh, scheme. Uh, okay, uh, number thirteen, uh, this would be, I guess. Um. The first big item for the I T department, um, asking to create a network administrator position. Um, right now with the, with I T, we've been. Limited and, uh, kind of understaffed for, for quite some time. Um. With that, I would like to, to create this position so I can have. Someone that has more networking capabilities than myself, uh, be able to. Monitor and, and update the network. Um, with that. Uh, cause right now, with being, uh, short-staffed, we, we, we have to be jacks of all trades, we don't, we don't have a dedicated network. Person. Um, right now, it's technically a system admin, it's like network admin. Uh, problem with that is. Our daily eight to five, Monday through Friday primarily is help desk or, you know. System services of the departments. So I'm asking to create this position so we can offload this work and have a dedicated person prioritize. You know, the network functionality of, of the county network. Um, total cost would, for that would be, uh, one hundred and twelve thousand three, uh, hundred and nineteen. Don't have any questions on that position?
I know, Helen, I know you've been understaffed for a long time.
Is, is that position at all, or any of these here, is any of, is, is any of that something that could be looked at for a, for a, a contract operator?
Um. In, in the short term, yes, uh, for certain type of. You know.
Cause even network administrators, that could be, that could be an off-site job. You know, they just, they don't have to be here. Plugging, I mean.
Well, to be throwing. I mean, monitor issues. Uh. I mean. You know, the P E. Department, you know. Now we do everything together. Uh, but to have something that can be really proactive. You know, be proactive, look for it, address issues before they actually impact the end user. Um, planning, uh, configuration changes, um, I mean, yes, some of that can be done contract-wise. Um, but having someone in-house that can be dedicated to that, I, I would say would be the best, best thing for the county in the long run. Someone that knows the network, uh, can help plan and, and do network upgrades on a timely manner. Uh, right now, we, we, we're kind of in a reactionary mode. Everything comes in, uh, we, we pretty much try to keep the, the apartments up and running so they can service the public. And then as we can, we get to other things. Uh, obviously if something breaks, you know, we shift over, but right now we're in a reactionary mode. Um, it's hard to, to plan out and keep everything up to date, you know, without having that dedicated person.
How long it take you to fill that position?
This last time?
The one you just filled when Jason moved over?
Uh, well, uh, I took a little bit of time to reassess, but once we got some job posted. Uh, we had eight applicants in, in one week. And after that, uh, after it was posted, one, you know, a, a week in a day is when, when we hired and.
At least you got some applicants, you know?
Yeah, yes, uh, the turnout was very well, and then the temporary position, we got, it's been posted just over a week, and we have three. New applicants for that, and then some of the applicants from the other position I would like to consider as well for, for that. It's a lot better.
As an auditor, I'd like to say, one of my big concerns is that, uh. We're, we're not planning for attrition, we're not planning for knowledge transfer. We have Dan in the department, and we need. A second person in, in that line of chain, that Dan is basically cross-training. On the functions that he does, and that in the event something happens, we're planning for the future. And I really think that's something we're missing.
I don't disagree with that at all.
And you're talking about event, we're talking something as simple as vacation.
Illness. Uh, it could, it could be anything.
Yeah. I just want to point that out. Yeah.
I had that conversation with Dan, every time he comes in my office, I want to have a life outside of the county.
Without training.
Right.
Have a minute. You know.
Have a weekend.
Yeah.
We are at budget time, you're asking for four, prioritize them, one, two, three, four for me.
Um. Well, I mean, my priorities for the I T department is a little. Little different than the priorities that. Okay, so. Right now we have three positions, well, in, in, in the tent. Um, problem is. Even when, when we're trying to hire someone, um, we're, we're asking for them to do a lot. And that's, that's the problem. Um. Then once they're hired, it takes a long time to get them up to speed because of what they have to do. So. Right now, like the, the system admin position, in theory, they would just deal with servers. Uh, you know, the eight to five Monday through Friday, well, right now, we have three help desk people, you know, I T director, system admin. And a I T analyst. And eight to five Monday through Friday, we're doing help desks to make sure in, in departments can, can function. You know, addressing individual, uh, needs. Now. That, that, that's the first issue. Now, I, I prioritize the network admin as higher than the others, because that's an easy segment, say, I can create that position. And say, okay, you're hired, this is your role and it's not help desk. So that does, it's an easier way for me to segment and offload. Excuse me, uh, the, the. Some of the, the. Responsibilities or, you know, the, the roles. It, it's just easier to segment that and say, okay, this is your piece. Um. But to be honest, the, the priority is still the services to the departments. So. I have multiple. Multiple positions, and the reason I did that is so y'all can kind of evaluate and, and, and choose the, the, the best one that y'all see fit. I would say for help desk, I think we've proven the minimum amount of people is three. Two, if you, you know, but that's I T director and a thirteen-year veteran I T analyst. As the system admin is converting the system. So. Help desk support, I would say minimum of three positions, technically I have one new position. That just started today. So it's going to take a while to get him, just on the help desk. So my system admin's going to have to continue, you know, doing that as well, so. In, in, in the. What I would say the best solution would be is to, to get a full help desk team. What I would say the best solution would be is to to get a full help desk team. Which is lower in, you know, knowledge, so we can have more people that can learn with and grow with the county. Um I would still primary be everything else until we can get more positions. It it it's it's a hard situation, it really is. Cause the amount of stuff we have to, I mean, we service every department. I mean. We keep everything running. Some departments are less IT dependent, you know.
Talk about me now.
So so we need somebody equal to you to cover when you're gone. And we need some help desk people to cover those people that we have now that shouldn't be doing help desk. We have two positions other than you and all three of y'all are doing help desk now plus every other job.
Yes, sir.
And no, no, no three of y'all are hired for help desk.
Correct.
Right? So we need a higher person, so we give you some breaks and a help desk persons, Pete, right? That would be, that would be how I would see your most important if, cause all you said there was, you have all these people and help desk just covers y'all's work for. Most of the time. You on the backup to do the whole thing so you can have a life. And we need some help desk to alleviate Joe and the new guy's position to go do their job that we hired them for, right? At on simplicity terms.
And and that. Trained in the network administration and which is a high priority to Dan, it can. Hopefully be both where we can, it we can have someone cross-trained in other functions. Doing that network administration and then having an additional uh work desk person that. Dan can hand off projects to.
But I I do think, Dan, that that false hope to think that you're gonna have one person. I mean that.
No, and. I I I definitely agree with that.
Department, I mean, we we all.
But.
You know?
To have one person have a primary, because right now, like I said, you know, let's just take the system administrator. It's system administrator and network. Well, he can't get to his system admin, you know, duties. Cause right now he's taken up with the other thing. So I'm just saying. If we if we get more in the help desk and I don't know how long it's gonna take to get the help desk back to where we were performing.
Yeah.
You know, the the loss of, you know, that thirteen year person.
Yeah.
Uh that's impacted in way, way more than I expected. I mean, I obviously. You know, it it's just a.
Well, yeah, I mean, well, I I get it, you know, and and you can't, you can't hold your employees back if they wanna move on, you know? Um but in in the grand scheme of things, yeah, I I get what you're talking about.
Right.
And and that's why why we're asking, hey, who do you need as far as a priority? You know, I I mean, cause obviously we can't do them all.
Correct. Um I mean, to be honest, I mean. The help desk. That's the interaction with with all the departments.
Yeah.
Um I would just say in the network position, that would be an easier fix of just isolating that role. Cause you know, technically, if someone, if a if a work order comes in, they're having issues, it might actually be elevated up to that network guy. For them to go out and and deal with the issue. So I'm not saying they would be just specialized and and they would do nothing but switches.
Yeah.
You know, there there's still interaction. Uh right now, um. When a project comes up, you know, it takes the whole team to go out on site and when we're doing the phone system. And if some someone can't get ahold of us, you know, then sometimes they call someone else.
Yeah.
And to call someone else to, you know, kind of interrupts. So.
Well, it's kind of productive too.
Right. So I, you know, the 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 the, I would like to to throw the team where we have an IT. Help desk position where their primarily goal or duty is to be in the office, take phone calls. Return phone calls and they would be the person that escalates up through through the IT department.
So the help desk position is probably your number one that that you need.
Well.
Other than the administrator. I mean, it's obvious you need the minister.
So item number fourteen is the the supervisor position for the help desk. That is kind of a reclass, I would like to move current personnel into that position. I don't know. Obviously, it still has to be created and posted. Nothing's a guarantee, I can't say, you know, but my plan would be to have current staff. Leaving that position if no one else is more suitable for that position.
Absolutely.
And that would free up the system admin. And then when they come in, they would be. Hopefully more dedicated to actually do system admin work and not help desk work. Right now we have the IT tech and then so basically help desk would be in-house, they would always be available. To communicate with departments, get more information, fix the simple things and then escalate it up. For more advanced issues.
I'm locked out of my computer again, Ash. You and Dan need to fix it. That's your help desk right there. Got to bring it though.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions right now, but I think. We're kind of in, kind of the same stage again, I think, kind of going back to the council thing. I almost think it would be interesting to put. And like an RFP out there for IT service support. I mean, we're talking about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of people here. And when a lot of stuff like, a lot of IT stuff doesn't have to be a guy in the room. And a a help desk doesn't have to be a guy sitting at a phone here in Walker County Huntsville. He can be at a IT support center that when you punch this button, it goes to whoever. And they have access to your phone and or whatever to your network and they can just fix it right there. So um.
That's where you get those people that don't speak very good English. There you go, bust my two cents on that.
And and you can, there's things you can put in your RFP, must be domestic, you know, or something like that, but. Continuously throwing bodies at stuff. Without looking at ways to insert different solutions, taking advantage of technology. I don't think that opens all the doors you should open. I think there's companies out there that will come look at your system and say. Yeah, and tell y'all get a little bit bigger, what you got is working fine. Or, man, I can do your help desk, I can do your network administration. And I can do this for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year and you guys manage it here. So I think, I don't know enough about it, but I've dealt with them enough to know that in today's world, you can, you can do everything offsite. And this is gonna, and I agree, if you take three weeks of vacation off or something comes up, we ain't a heap of trouble here. You know, it's, and you know, um somebody could call you tomorrow and say, hey, we're gonna pay you a bazillion dollars. You're like, I love you, I gotta go. I mean, that's what the other guy went, you know, you know, somebody called him and said, hey, I got a place. So.
So so Dan, what is, what is your reserves from from doing something like that? I mean, the the vulnerability, I guess, or?
Of contracting out?
Yeah.
Um. Well, I mean, we're we're trying to get contract set up where they can do certain smaller tasks or projects. Um but the day to day, I mean. I mean, security wise, I mean, tha- that's a concern.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, the security side of it.
Right. I mean.
Yeah, but that's, that, there's not a, there's, it's no more, it's no less secure than people he hires.
Well, and and that's true.
It's anybody can mess you up. So there's an ownership to it that I respect. I know that and I and I appreciate how much you care about our system here, cause I know the hours you put in. But at the same time. Sometimes it takes somebody to kind of pry your fingers off of something to say, hey, you know, let's look at something else. And if it comes backwards, where it's nothing, we're not on that. You know, you issue it, even if it costs a few bucks, have a guy come evaluate it and say, yeah, there's a lot of stuff you can do or know what you got is great. Or in between, but in today's world. Throwing bodies at stuff is is expensive, the most expensive thing you can do is throw a body at something, especially if you're adding realistically two. And this may be where we get before we go to contracting it out, but I would like to see. Somebody come look at it and say, hey, yeah, that's, there's an opportunity here for you guys to, um it's gonna cost you some money. To get where you need to be, but now I've got unlimited IT people for unlimited problems, unlimited help desk, unlimited network support. If your guy doesn't show up, I have a guy that knows ninety-nine percent of your system. He could come in tomorrow and Band-Aid you until you get somebody on board.
What did you have on that, Cheryl?
So the Department of Information Resources uh has all of these IT services that y'all have been talking about. And all we have to do is send an application in, they form it out to their people. They call Dan, talk to him, and Dan ultimately chooses the ones that he wants that matches. The applications and what we need them for. So uh that's the way it is. Easy, no RP, it's already been done.
That'd be worth the phone call to me. That that would be worth taking a peek at.
But we, I I remember talking about this and asking that question. And maybe it was on a different forum, a different deal, but it's like backlog dinner was. A long time that we couldn't get them or. Uh I'm trying to remember that conversation, uh but it was right after we had gotten our. I just, I remember that conversation, I asked that question, why do we get those to help? And the answer was that it wasn't. In a a timely manner.
I mean, if you could get somebody to do the help desk stuff, then then obviously you have the. To even, you know, maybe you got somebody in house that can move up, you know, and and and. Be the next Dan in line. I I don't know, but you know. I mean, the more you think about it, it's it's worth looking into.
Yeah, I think you need to look into it. Cause like I say, if it goes to the help desk, a lot of help desks is, gosh, my screen blocked up. My email doesn't work anymore, or my, just my phone's looking glitchy. It's, it's just time killer stuff. That approach the other, oh, let me, let me look real quick. Oh, here's your problem over here. Now you're fixed, thank you very much. Or I can't fix it. I'm creating a work order, I'm sending it to your onsite staff and they'll be in touch with you very soon.
I I think no matter if we contract out services, we need a core team. Because you've got to have people onsite that when they need to run to somebody's office, they can do it. But you also need some highly knowledgeable in-house people to communicate. With these people that you're going to use for something else. So not have an IT director. To not have a specialist in your network administration and not have at least a core. Uh work processing center. I I I see that as the core piece to take advantage of these contract services.
Oh, yeah, you have to have, you have people here, absolutely, absolutely. You have to have folks on the ground, you're not gonna get rid of them. They all had them. But what I'm saying is maybe what, maybe what we have is close, you know?
Yeah, but if we don't have a core, we don't have a surprise core team in place.
And I don't disagree with that either.
You might could outsource some of that and put another higher position and you may can hire your other guy back.
Exactly right. Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm good with that, Jay.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Dan, get with Cheryl on that stuff and.
Sir.
I'm not opposed to that, Bill. We don't know what he says. They call that English, but it's not.
Who's the next getting?
Ms Parker.
Thank you, Dan. I know you get a lot going on.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you for your time, man.
Yeah, and it's a lot of stuff we don't.
And you you do a lot of stuff, not only, I can't even talk about it, cause that's not my world, but thank you for what you do. I know, I get scolded every day.
You look that way? I didn't even think you looked over.
I glanced over and I had two of them looking at.
Three ninety-seven.
Yeah, I didn't even think you looked over.
I shouldn't have. And I I got to say what I got to say, I'm a short timer.
I have it here ready.
All right. So first thing we're asking for in our department is who we are. Um like receptionist position essentially adds some funding to it to create a clinical division chief. Um we're really struggling with the amount of employees we have and. The training flow that we have, along with also trying to keep up training with our first responder organization. Um consistent throughout the department, um especially with our kind of staffing issues um. We're obligated to provide training to our first responder organizations for that position, kind of lacking because we just don't have. A dedicated person to be able to do that. Um we don't have a dedicated person to be able to keep up with our. The e-tracking or the building of our um education program. We don't really have. One person that can adequately oversee our FTO program. Um so this is something our department, I know they asked for it years and years ago. When I was still on the truck, I've asked for it a couple of times. Um it would be huge for our department to be able to have one person to handle the education. And work alongside Dr. Kovar. Um cause it's just multiple people working on it, things are falling through the cracks and it's. It it's hard to stay consistent with our training. Um I mean, that's vital for our department and the the ongoing training. We have to have, I mean, we have to provide.
This is at forty-seven thousand to one oh three to one sixteen, right?
Right. All right. So the next thing on the list is ambulance remount. We would like to remount, we were the used ambulance we bought last summer. Into um fourteen foot Fraser trucks that we got um. Be significantly cheaper than adding two brand new additional trucks to our fleet. And in typical fashion for us, um we have had some maintenance and mechanical issues. Top of within the last two, three weeks with some of our older units, not the used ones that we got, the new ones that we got. Um we had one that went down, it needs a transmission, another one. Um started driving really rough, they took it in, had it evaluated. Broken in over five places, so it's not something else repairable. And then I had another one that went out for Springs, which is a high cost to repair or replace. Um and that one also cracked frame. Both of those trucks, they're between a hundred and ninety and two hundred and seven thousand miles on those trucks. Um so we'd like to remount two of the, the used Frasers that we have, and then we'll have the two that are coming at the end of the year. Um to hopefully get it out of that rough, right? But kind of put a. A hindrance on our reserve status for, you know, it always snowballs, right? When one goes down and the. Um but those are some of our older, older trucks that we've had.
Like you just said this, but how many do we have in the pipeline that we need, we have not taken delivery on?
We have two that are coming sometime between October and January. Coming up.
Now put us how many newer ones? I know we got one that's three.
So we have um.
Are the gray ones?
We have three of the gray ones, which.
That'd be five.
Yeah, so that would give us five brand new. And then remounting the two used Frasers that we got last summer.
Not the, are the, are the broken frame ones Frasers?
No.
Okay, so we're just gonna surplus them and.
With the different manufacturers, in fact, we would have to go all the way to community. Evaluated and it's hot. Um I got Frasier included, there's a quote for the chassis, which is significantly higher, I got some quotes from Sains. Um which is where we kind of put our Tahos, so those came back.
If if we go that route, will we put one down, leave one running and then when they finish? If, if we go that route, will we put one down, leave one running, and then when they finish the first one, get the second, or we send them both off at one time?
Kind of depends on the, the timeline of it. I know the remounts go a lot quicker than the brand new trucks, um. Obviously, um, no, we're still working on the licensing with the remounted truck down in New April.
Yeah, we've had that truck now for.
Yeah, it was a title issue, but we got it today, so that's what I'm gonna do after this, though. Hopefully, once that one is licensed by the state, that will kind of take the burden off of us and. Maybe we'll have the two new ones that we can ship to off at a time to be remounted. Just kind of depends on what Frasier's timeline is, because they're also moving into any of your house too. So that's, who, who knows how that's gonna be there.
But what are we doing? I guess, what are we doing to break these frames?
So.
What kind of trucks are they, Rachel?
So the two of the trucks, they're from Denton Martin, um, so they're a four fifty. Which is pretty much what our, the rest of our fleet is. One of them, I want, this is just a guess. One of them has spent the majority of its lifetime going out to the Estelle unit. I don't know if anybody has been out to the Estelle unit to see that road. How rough it is. Um, I've reached out to them multiple times in my nearly four years here to see if they can repair that road. It's very rough. It's just. And.
Tell them about the actual unit, bro.
The, the unit, the road going. Into the unit. Um, it's pretty long, it's rough, it's always been rough. Um, so that's kind of one of the speculations. On that truck in particular, that's the worst one. Um. Out there all the time, but I mean, otherwise, I'm not sure what would.
Okay.
Cause the frames to be cracked, but my understanding is they have to completely take the box off. Try to fix it.
Well, yeah, if, if the frame is busted, I mean, yeah, there's no reason to fix it. I'm just trying to figure out. Yeah.
Only in my lifetime I've experienced one broken frame.
I broke one.
And, and those trucks too, um, they were purchased before I was here and they were maintained before I was here, so I don't.
Yeah, but, but I, I get that and, and I'm not saying that, but I mean, they're, they're obviously four fifty trucks, I mean.
You wouldn't think the frame would be breaking, what you're saying.
I wouldn't think so.
I mean, it's a different manufacturer too, so I'm not sure what they're.
And I mean, I know the trucks are heavy, but they're not that heavy.
It might be Mexico steel.
Well. But anyhow, it, it was just a question.
The question we all had too, where I was like, what?
Yeah, because usually you don't hear about frames breaking on trucks.
It was a surprise.
Okay, thank you.
That's that. Uh, the next one, I know. You guys are not gonna be excited about the next one, which would be salary increases. I know you guys just gave them because last year. Um, but we're losing medics as fast as we get them, like, we just can't keep up. Um, and the last year, we've lost at least four paramedics to go somewhere else for better pay. Um, I'm still down three medics and two EMTs, so. That kind of prevents us from being able to fully staff a whole truck. As an ALS unit, as an immediate life support unit. Um, so. We're getting into situations where we're kind of having to run basic life support trucks, um. More regularly than we'd like to, which is an interesting burden on our district chief. If they're then having to chase these basic units around to make sure that, that the patients are getting what they need. Um. So that's kind of where we're at on that. Um, I know it's a huge ask from you guys. But it's, we just graduated three out of paramedic school and already have one that's jumped ship, so.
So I had a question on that. Did, did we put a contract in place where she's got a, did we pay for that?
Leaving, we did not pay for her to go through school. Um, the other two, yes, there's a contract. So if they leave within two years, the contract says they're to pay back. You know, what we just covered them for there.
But I'll, I'll, and I'll kind of comment on that too, that it, we're looking at doing the same thing. Uh, and I know the sheriff's department does. That is a unbinding contract.
This is kind of.
It's a handshake, you know, and, and you hope that they hang around long enough that you get your use out of them. Even if it's not.
We could fix that. I had this conversation with the, the guys in Brian to do the road bridge stuff. Uh, if you wanna send those guys to that, you set up a deal.
Teaks.
Or through teaks.
Yeah.
Where they go and get a loan, a school loan, however you call it. In their name to pay for their course. We then give them a stipend for over a course of however long we want to pay them. For two years or whatever, you give them a stipend every month. That way, if they leave, the stipend quits and it goes away. There's a way to fix that. But the, you have to have the.
Something to look into, because I mean, I, I don't know how that goes back.
We, we were talking about teaks with the CEO drop.
Yeah.
Right? Cause a course is forty-five hundred dollars or whatever. That's, that's how you fix that. We can fix that pretty quick.
Maybe something to look at into all the way, I don't know.
Yeah, across the board, countywide.
Okay.
So the next item on our list is IV pumps. Um, this has kind of become the standard of the year across the country and state and our region. Um, there's a lot of drugs that we currently bury that are supposed to be on a drip, which means a controlled rate. They're administered to the patient, watching them or safe to kind of administer and watch them. Um, however, we do have several drugs that could be. Better made for our patients, but it required IV pump. Because it requires. With our call volume and how sick our patients are, and a lot of times we're taking patients, Montgomery County. For definitive care, um, an IV pump would be huge due to those long transport times and. The type of patients we're treating. Um, septic patients need to be on phase oppressors that go on a pump. Um, we carry a couple of those, like more, um, we could do antibiotics, we could. Control our current medication administration a little bit better. Um, so this is something that we've really been looking at for a long time. Um, we could slowly incorporate them here or there, but that doesn't really. Do anything across the board for all of our patients. We'd like to have a pump on every truck.
Okay.
Okay.
And this twenty-seven thousand would be.
Well, I looked at the backup, right? And that's for twelve years.
Yes, it's. We should be one on everything, and I think one on the district chief vehicle as well. And then along with that, our next item is replacement lungoscopes. So these are. This is a piece of equipment we use when we have to put it to somebody to breathe for them. Um, our current piece of equipment. Has notoriously been having failures over the last couple of years, not just in our department, but across the board. Um, it has a screen, so there's a video on there. Um, and a lot of times that video. Is shut off, um, which is not ideal when you're in the middle of trying to, to put a tube in somebody to breathe for them. Um, these new ones, in addition to having a camera, they also record the intubation. So we could then attach it to the patient care report, uh, which would verify ET tube placement at the hospital. And we could also use it for quality improvement within the department, training, things like that. Um. So we're asking to, to replace our old ones, which we've had for quite a while with these new ones. And then the next one, I would like to bump up three EMT positions, two paramedic positions. Um, for, for EMTs that went through paramedic school. Um, they're now paramedics and. I think it gets us a little bit closer to being able to hire for any physician that we have instead of a set number of. Set number of EMTs, which kind of inhibits our EMT from going to school as well, because they're kind of. Locked in and there's not anywhere for them to go. We don't have the right amount of physicians for them. Um, I know we did a couple, I think last year or the year before as well. Um, the next one is a increase to our insurance. Including adding the two trucks that we'll be getting later in the year. Um, I had them put us for that, so. That's just the addition of those two trucks. Our air card line in our budget. Within our ambulances, our. To run all of our equipment and our, have internet wherever we go. Um, we're kind of going over every year, so I think this would kind of cover that for the next two. We bumped it up just a little bit. Um, number nine.
I, I had asked this earlier about the air, but. I think, yeah, but are we going through getting the best price for these air parts at bulk rate for the county?
Um, we're asking for two tough books and the mounting equipment for the two new trucks that will be coming in. Um, and then that will, that's one that we can put in another like supervisory type vehicle. Um. The two narc boxes as well for those truck, followed by two cardiac, cardiac monitors, two ventilators. And then, um, we can.
How long is it gonna take? Tough books or?
The tough books are pretty quick.
All the stuff.
The, the tough books, the narc boxes, they'll come in pretty quick. Um, in the past, we've never really had to wait very long for them. Um, the cardiac monitors and ventilators take a little bit longer, generally about three months. Um.
Do you have any of this stuff on the two we're fixing to cut off?
No. So basically what would happen is we would have our reserve trucks would not have this equipment on them, so you just have to move equipment. Back and forth from one to the other, um, which poses a problem if we're gonna have a truck up for standby or. Increased call volume and we upstaff the truck, um, then we kind of don't have that equipment on those trucks.
See, Rachel, it says four tough books. You said two.
Backup says four.
Oh, it should. I believe it should be two.
For the two new ambulances.
Yes.
So she's said, the, the, the rugged depot quote.
The backup is four, okay, I'm not, I could double check on that, I didn't, I get. Sure. Alright, I'll pay for it.
It says, uh, okay, you said you would need four plus the two arriving in, so.
There you go, I wrote it. You just, you just passed it up. Yeah, this tough book there.
And the quote matches.
The quotes.
Then it, then it's probably the typo. We might be down two and then need the two for the trucks. I can double check on that.
So my, what, what I was asking about on the ZO. Every one of these trucks coming in, then we need to wait another six months for monitors.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't think that we would. Um, I don't foresee that. Which is quickly is, it comes to pass.
Okay.
I think the last time we got ventilators, they were here just within one, two months.
Took that long to get them registered?
Yeah.
That's not a big issue.
No, no, I know, I should. It's the whole process, I understand. I generally start the process before the truck take here, so. Send it in when, when everything's together. Um. The next thing after all of that equipment would be, uh, increased our striker contract. That's just the regular price going up. Um, in October, like they do to us every year. Um, since I got this quote, though, I did ask our rep, because I know it had been talked about in the past of adding. ESD two's equipment to our contract. Um, so to do that, it would be an additional twenty-five hundred dollars. Because some of the equipment that's current on that contract is gonna fall off. So where it's like serviceable by striker, so the only thing that would be serviceable, they could put on that contract would be load system. Down here. Um, but that's something to do, um. Five hundred dollars. And I think that part of their contract expired.
I think last year we told them to. That was, uh.
Can I just go out and add information?
That, that ten four, ten one eighty-nine is bad, two hundred and fifty, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars.
And, um, I just wanna go back, sorry, um, for the ambulance remount, that does include one striker. Power load system, because one of the trucks were remounted and then have auto. Um, so I included that in there.
So.
Um, then moving back down, um, ESO, um, which is our patient care reporting, scheduling, asset. Management, education, um, and the one platform that we use for everything, their price is increasing. Um, HandTevy, which is our app, um, it, it's all the math out of everything and it tells us. We want exactly what equipment to use for what we want. They're going up a little bit and then our sending something to our robot managers, maintenance contract is going up. Um, they go up every year by a couple hundred bucks, so. So then I would just like to add a little bit of funding to our. Like purchase services and where we really see impact is the background checks that we have to run on our employees whenever we hire somebody. Um, we always go over, um, same thing with drug screens and physicals for new employees. So I'd like to add a little bit of funds to those. Um, and then travel and lodging, um, I'd like to just bring that up to a total of ten thousand. Our employees too, um, so we can adult. Then our uniform allowance, we have twenty thousand dollars historically. Last year, we guys added. Twenty thousand to a contingency, so I didn't know if. Moving forward, if that needs to fill in the contingency or if we could just switch all over into the budget. We have nearly sixty employees that we have to.
Yeah. I'd rather stay, say it's staying in the contingency, but. You know.
Right, but. We go over, we go over every year.
It's only just there.
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
That's great.
Sounds good, Rachel.
That's it. I mean, I can think of some more.
It's okay, you don't make. We're good, right? Thank you, Rachel.
I'm thirteen.
I saw your district chief chasing and handing us out ninety-eighty. I figured them.
Yeah, either the principal call or the.
Let's carry.
I'll go, I'll bust through this.
Alright.
But it gives you something to look at, so kind of.
I, I know you know we broke by now. I know you know this.
This is just an overview of procedures. Y'all have it as your backup, um, goes over. Uh, case management and, uh, records management, and again, records management is, uh. By far increasing faster than the case management is. Uh, registry of the court. Uh, right now the balance is three point one, you're fine, three point one million. This is all the cash bonds and ICT accounts that we have for people with private cases or simple cases where we're holding money for others. That's that account. That's not county money, by the way, that's. Uh, financial trends.
We're not, we already grabbed it.
Uh-huh. Uh, financial trends shows kind of where we're at on what, what we are bringing in, which is county money. Um, the records. And, uh.
We chase all that money, or does that go to state?
Uh, it's split roughly sixty, forty, so my numbers here are a huge. Approximate, Miss Allen would have it more. A huge approximate. Ms. Allen would have a more. Accurate number, but I just kind of ballparked. I think it's sixty, forty roughly, because it goes to the state, somewhere around there. Next one. So budget request number one. Is copy machine. The copy machine is on its last leg. And, uh, maintenance doesn't have parts spread anymore, so we literally. Have pieces of paper stuck in spots, so it thinks the door is closed. Um. I know that I'd gotten with purchasing about this on either renting it or purchasing it. I'm not sure if there is a copier fund or.
There was.
Or if we can just rent it.
Put me a money in it.
If we rented the maintenance. If we rented the maintenance with the rental, right?
Yes.
So that would be a plus for that, for that.
We, we don't rent copiers, we buy coffee. And then there's a maintenance agreement on.
Okay, same with leasing. You can lease them, but.
Oh, okay.
Purchases them outright. Gotcha, okay.
Which is cheap.
Purchase them outright.
Right, so what's, what's the number on your printer? I don't, I don't see it.
Uh.
Copy.
Cost is penny because I, I did a lease for, uh, for sixteen months or forty-eight months.
Okay.
I don't have a cost on purchasing it.
Usually they're about, they're a little low.
Depends on the size of the copiers or how much they, they can start out at fifty-five hundred and. Go up to twelve thousand dollars depending on, you know, all the bells and whistles.
We don't need bells and whistles, just black and white.
If you want color, if you want black and white, how many paper trees you want.
Yeah, next time. Yeah, let, let, let's do that.
We got a lease agreement. What you wanted to look at.
Okay, but we can do it. Did you look at it by next, by our next court?
Probably.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's get that in the queue. If you're having a. Jimmy rig your door to.
Well, I mean, there's a copier fund.
There's money there, right?
Money.
Yeah, yeah. Let's put something together between now and Thursday, have it next Monday.
Okay. Uh, second request, I thank everybody across county. After Commissioner Dexter spoke a while ago on, on the Adobe licensing. We're, we're all in need of it, so I am the only one in the department that has it on my computer. For us to do appeals in the tenth court of appeals, which we do have in some criminal cases, but mainly in probate and simple cases. It has to be done in a PDF format because I have to bookmark it, page number, et cetera. They can only do that from my computer.
I don't mind.
So I'm, I'm asking for at least one more license, so my chief deputy, Maren, can assist with that.
So I've been asked to get a county wide count of how many Adobe. Pro users, you know, you want like two or three in your office, so forth and so on. And see if we can't get a corporate. Pricing. Uh, and see if we can get it. I'm in the process of doing that. I just don't have it. Locked in.
That's what I was asking about earlier.
So I'm still trying to gather information, um, of how many. Users in each department is needed.
If I could do more than one, that'd be great, but I was just.
Yes, well, again, this is a wish list, so. And they normally have a break, so it's like, you know, twenty-five to ten to a hundred, hundred to a hundred, whatever. However many, so if I can get just an estimate of how many we know.
It may be good to transfer all these individual budgets out of the department.
The man.
Budget of centralized.
Yeah, we have one in my office. We have a Adobe Pro in my office.
Well, I, I T had asked me to take it over and when I got to looking at it. Uh. Then one of the coaches had asked me to do that, so.
Sounds great.
I don't even know what it's done about. Nice people.
Me neither.
Thank you.
I guarantee you, S and knows what it is.
I know what it is, but I was.
You ever used it?
No, I've totally.
Huh?
Moving on, moving on.
Those words, she didn't like it.
Uh, the, the commissioner court agenda minute solution, I did have two, um. My interviews, but. Where they would come and give us like a demo. But after looking at the budget important things going on and Ally and I kind of talking a little bit. We're gonna leave it as it is for now and revisit it maybe next year, so I'm withdrawing this request.
Alright, what was that doing, Karen?
It's the agenda and software package, so what we can do. It's, it's software, huh?
I thought that's what we had you.
We're kind of doing it still old school, but.
I get it.
I'm good with it, cause it saves. Money.
I'm just thinking.
Um, jury supplies budget, so when county court at law changed in January. The jury supplies have now come back to the county clerk's office. And I'm just asking for it to be. But it's thirty-five hundred, that way we would have enough with the cost of water and snacks that have gone up. Over the past, that we would have enough to sustain, we have juries.
Listen to that now.
Uh. I don't have that on my thing. I think it ended up being like five hundred dollars more. It wasn't much more, oh.
You have five hundred or you have three thousand?
Ask it for a total of thirty-five hundred.
And how much do you have now?
For some reason, it's not on mine.
Yeah. You can find out.
Not to be right now.
Yeah.
You're not asking.
You just want to up it to that.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah. How much, you know how much you spent? So far?
No, because it just came into our budget in January.
I guess.
But I can get to that answer. And the next request, um, is a group allocation reclassification. So I have a civil deputy. That does civil case management, and when I was going back through the budget, I realized that a civil clerk is a one oh six, not a one oh five. I'm just simply asking for that to be moved. Um, to the different pay group. And at this point, none, none of my staff are maxed at more, well, one of my staff, take that back, is maxed at market. The rest are not. So this is not gonna be in, I mean, it, it's obviously gonna be an implication on financials for the market, but I don't pay it back. Questions?
That's it?
I, I'm not following on that. Uh, you. You got a position, you don't pay the market, but you wanna move the. Market higher, but you're not gonna pay the market.
Nah, so. It's a group one oh five, so my budget is funded to market of a one oh five. If I request it to a one oh six. Budget's gonna fund to the market of a one oh six, but I'm not gonna pay at market.
We always budget.
Huh?
We always budget at market.
Correct, yes. I'm not asking for money over market pay. Well, if that helps clarify a little bit. Any questions?
Mama, I'm good. I know where you're at. Right there.
Man. You got anything else on the budget? Talk about.
Not till we know where the money is.
Public comments.
I do, yeah.
We're just gonna wait till the commissioners. Public comments. Questions from media. Misses Court, okay.
Now.
Now it's your turn.
It was for a budget.
Oh, um, we had already moved on.
When we figure out exactly what. As far as all of everyone. I may wanna move one of my. Might create another position. When do we need to do that? So I, I may wanna create a position in my department out of my funding.
Which would, uh.
When do we need to do that?
As a supplemental. No request, uh, and. We say what's wanting to do and we would. Uh, say, you can take the, then, uh, departmental budget, which is basically the same thing and it's funded per cent for a unit beginning.
Yeah, I thought we just did one in per second. Of that.
Yeah, I mean, if you need it now, just go ahead and run it through court. I mean, if you wanna do it now, so.
Uh, you're just moving money from operation, yeah?
Yeah.
I will give y'all just, uh, some very quick early numbers. It looks like that. Based on the latest, uh. New property added to the tax row, plus looking at sales tax and a, a couple of other revenues. General fund would have about eight hundred thousand dollars to. Add to one time. Roden Bridge, uh. If we take the new property and we split that between. General Roden Bridge and EMS proportionately as. They're part of the budget that's fun with the tax rate, Roden Bridge would have about a hundred and twenty. And EMS would have approximately eight. So, uh, one time, I mean, ongoing added above those numbers. Basically would come from the tax rate. And the tax rate generates about six hundred thousand. Per cent added to the current tax rate. So just broad, broad planning.
Hmm, yeah. I see more than that in this book.
That was in the first page.
And it's. Sorry, man. Patricia did it to you.